Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I think we can begin the July 25th meeting of our City Council. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Are there any changes to the minutes of July 11th or/or special study notes of July 11th? If there are none, then they stand as they were presented to us. I have a proclamation here. Arvada Food Bank is going to do a presentation. I'll just say welcome.
Hi, y'all. How's everyone doing?
Doing well.
So, here's the truth. I fell while exercising at the gym, which proves that exercising is bad for you. Chief Brennan, we want to thank you so much for your work with Feeding the Future Backpack Program and we have a nice little plaque for you. Wanted to give you some statistics about the Backpack Program for Wheat Ridge. As you all know, when the Arvada Community Food Bank extended its borders to Wheat Ridge, we now serve 10,948 kids in Wheat Ridge. The total number of volunteer hours for each school year, 1,423. Four schools in Wheat Ridge are being served. Those schools are Head Start, Color Strand, Pennington, and Stevens. And donations from appeals from you all, Wheat Ridge citizens, $7,995. So, and on top of that, we have another $34,031 from the Backpack Program, Feed the Future Backpack, and it is because of your police chief. We need to give this man an incredible round of applause and I'd clap if I could.
Right.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
You know, I don't know what to say, so. You know, I have a great group of folks, citizens from Wheat Ridge that help out and I'd like to acknowledge Tracy Langworthy. She was a great help when she was a member of council. She serves as our secretary for the group that we have and has been a real supporter and there's a good, I could go on and on with a group of supporters. But last year, Wheat Ridge Feed the Future raised a little over, about $34,000 to provide sacks of food for students at the schools that Jill has mentioned. You know, and those equated to thousands of sacks of food that were provided over the 40 weeks of the school year. But, you know, I'm just, you know, one person trying to do the right thing for a group of people out there. I don't do it myself. I have a lot of support from others in the city and, you know, a great City Council allows me to interact with the community and to make a difference. So, thanks to the Arvada Community Food Bank. They're a great group to work for. They really do great things. Thanks, thanks to council, mayor, past council members who helped support the program and will continue to try to do the right thing moving forward. Thank you very much.
I'm Sandy Martin and I'm the Director of the Arvada Community Food Bank. And I also want to introduce Abby Miller, who is the Coordinator of the Backpack Program, the total program, which includes Wheat Ridge, and then Steve Galbert and Allen Albrecht, who are board members for our food bank. So, with that, I want to also talk about the Client Choice Program, which is a grocery store at the food bank where our clients can actually come in and shop. We used to have it that they would hook up with a shopper and go through and have a card that had the food pyramid and they'd know how many carbs, how many protein ones, twos, et cetera, to get for the size of family that they have. This year, we had decided and gone to the board to see if we could let, implement self-shopping. So now, our clients can come in and actually shop themselves with their card. Who better knows what their family will eat than our clients? You know, shoppers just help with the process if they want it. So, with that said, I want to tell you that 1,715 Wheat Ridge households came through the food bank last year. That's quite a number. That represents about 15% of our total client load that come in. We also serve all of parts of Westminster, part of Edgewater, part of Golden, all of Mountain View, all of Lakeside, and all of Wheat Ridge and Arvada. So your contributions are tremendous in helping your citizens that are food insecure. Of those 1,700-plus people, they had a total of 2,253 visits. And you need to come and visit the food bank, take a tour. They leave our food bank with minimally 80 to 100 pounds of fresh food, vegetables, meat, eggs, dairy, fresh produce. So it would really be interesting for you to come in and see how we're serving your residents. And with your help, we're able to continue doing that. Of that number, 214 folks with handicaps or disabilities came in to be served from Wheat Ridge and 345 female heads of household came in to be served. The average income of the clients from Wheat Ridge that are coming to the food bank is $13,793 annually. So this is a real boost for them and helps with their food budget for the year. The City of Wheat Ridge, you, thanks to Councilman Urban, contributed $15,000 last year to our program and $15,000 the prior year to assist us with buying the fresh eggs and the milk. Those we could not get donations for. We do have 27 agencies that contribute food to us. Sprouts, King Supers, Walmart, those kinds of places contribute over a million pounds of food to us each year. So, with that said, I want to thank the Wheat Ridge City Council. You have been a tremendous partner and we really couldn't do it without you. Your clientele from Wheat Ridge is wonderful and we thoroughly enjoy working with them. We also have a Bridges to Opportunity Program, which is a self-sufficiency program. So we're now helping Arvada, Wheat Ridge, Westminster, et cetera, clients navigate the system for how to get food stamps or other benefits they're entitled to, how to get ready to look for a job, how to go online and look for a job, how to interview. They are hooked up with a coach. They also have special tutors that help them pass, take the tests, pass the curriculum and take the test for their GED, which I don't know if you know, but the GED test has gotten very difficult to take. In fact, Allen is one of our tutors and does math. They don't want me doing the math or they'd really be in big trouble. So I want to thank you. We've opened up a lot of services and it's through these types of partnerships that we are able to serve the greater community and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you your plaque. Who would you like to accept it? Chief Brennan? Here, okay. Wheat Ridge is one of my favorite communities alongside our county. And I just want to mention, because I've always wanted to mention this before, I haven't been in front of myself, Chief Brennan is incredible. Can't hear me? Sorry. He, when I was the Jefferson County Head Start Director, Chief Brennan was on my foundation. With that foundation, we raised $300,000 to build the Head Start in Wheat Ridge. At that time, it was one of the lower income levels in the county and he didn't miss a meeting. He was there with us. We raised that money and built that school without a penny of it having to be on a mortgage. So it was paid for clear and free. We also had the privilege of working with city staff and the council to allow us, to help us with permitting and those kinds of things. So I haven't gotten to say thank you for that, but I'm saying it now. Thank you.
One more thing. The City of Wheat Ridge has been well represented on the Board of Directors by Nancy Snow. And as you all know, she's had some health issues and we would, and we're starting to recruit board members. We would love to have more Wheat Ridge representation. So if you are interested, please get ahold of me and I will get you what you need to apply for our board. We meet two hours a month. It would be a wonderful representation to have any of you on the board or any of you on the board. I'm hoping we get some representative, more representation.
More. More. Thank you all very much. Okay, we now move to citizens' right to speak. And maybe you recall, we're handling it similar, but there is one difference. We also are having a study session after tonight's meeting. So we are taking both items that are not on any agenda as well as study session items so that we can put them at the beginning. And then we have items which are specific to business agenda items. So I'm seeing, I'm going to start with this one right here, citizens' right to speak, which starts with Jesse Hill.
My name is Jesse Hill. I live at 2995 Chase Street and also own 3001 Chase Street. I hope someday to turn from a shack into my dream home. I've been out of town the last few council meetings. You guys have discussed a lot on building height and redevelopment. I appreciate the discussion and the thought during those study sessions and the hard work staff has done there, too. But I really don't want this to be something that's just punted or pushed over to planning commission. This is truly your responsibility as council members since it truly does involve private property rights and how those might be affected and taken. Personally, seeing this up front is very important. I would be honored to host an off-site study session. And my properties, 30th and Chase, with council, staff, the community most important, to get that real-life feeling of the neighborhood. I've hosted many discussions with neighbors and would love to do that with yourself once we get some language drafted. It really is important to see what those real-life things are. And first example, I'm going to give you some of the facts and numbers because I love facts and numbers of what are out there. And I've spent hundreds of hours on my own properties wondering, hey, why do these ones that I see being built look the way they do? You know, I walk up and say, why are they so tall? Well, in East Wheat Ridge, Olinian Gardens specifically, community, we got a 10-degree slope, five feet over that 50 feet that drops. So, and just to get the drainage right so it doesn't drain improperly from your other neighbor, you're already bouncing that house up another foot or two. So they give the feeling and also chop into that 35-foot height out there. So standing next to them, you get to see that a little better. You know, why can't you just build a basement and go deeper? You know, a question I've asked, you know? The fact is, East Wheat Ridge has a very high water table. Geotek and reports and drillings show water at five to seven feet out there. I can't build a basement. You can't go deeper. It's just, it's one of those things that prevent that from happening habitable and if you do, they flood. Trust me, I know. You know, the second being, why do they need a third story? Well, R-1C has a very restrictive max coverage, 40%, you know, and with the detached garages, it's very tough to give that character of the house. It ends up with a larger front yard, which we love, and a large backyard space. But if you just chop it off at 25 feet, you're actually going to get the unintended consequences to get the square footage you need of a cube. And that is absolutely not what our community is out there. So I'd love you to see the area. I'd love you to see those facts that are, and rug on the economics, a lot of it, too. When you look at the demolition, asbestos, the fees with the sewers and the taxes, the development, Ken having an Adu, you know, why eventually the form is fitting the function and that's why you're seeing these houses the way they are. So if you're interested, please feel free to get ahold of Ken or anyone at staff and I'd be happy to host a meeting and somehow put that together because it's real important for the community to see this, including you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Roger Moore.
Mayor J., Council, my name is Roger Moore and I live at 3550 Miller Court. This morning, I sent an email to our state, county, and city representatives and staff and made the case for what I saw to be a disturbing trend, that over the past six years, Jeffco has the highest growth of DUI and DUID fatal crashes of all the counties in the state. I wasn't necessarily looking for that, but as I was looking at the data, that's what I saw and it really alarmed me. So I wrote the email and my thanks to Commissioner Rosier and Chief Brennan for already responding to me. So what does Jeffco's DUI and DUID trend mean for Wheat Ridge? I have a couple thoughts. One is I did the same analysis for our city as I did for our counties. On a negative note, since 2010, Wheat Ridge has generally had a higher number of DUI and DUID fatal crashes than what would be in line with our population. And you can see that by the dots that are above this line right here. On the other hand, it appears that the trend is declining, although the trend line is still above what would be in line for our population. So DUI and DUID fatal crashes remain, or at least it looks like on the chart, remain an issue within the city. The second thought I have is tricky because it deals with ethics. And it's hard for me to talk about ethics without sounding moralistic, but since business ethics was a part of my college curriculum, I'll give it a try. Point one is that Jeffco seems to have a DUI and DUID trend that it needs to address as a matter of public safety. Point two is that Wheat Ridge legally sells a lot of alcohol and recreational drugs, far more than is needed for the convenience of its citizens. Point three is that we want to be good neighbors with our sister cities and we want them to be good neighbors to us, which means in part respecting, if for no other reason than for civic dignity, the decisions their citizens and councils make regarding alcohol and recreational drugs, and we would want the same courtesy from them. Point four, except for profit, point four, except we profit from the very things that cities like Lakewood, Golden, and Arvada have set limits to, and that could be perceived as opportunistic and not very neighborly. Point five is that many studies show the societal cost of legalized drugs as many times greater than the revenue obtained and Wheat Ridge profits. And which brings me full circle back to Jeffco having a DUI and DUID issue that needs, that it needs to turn around. What should Wheat Ridge do? I do not have an answer, but I think it appropriate that the council discuss it probably sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Mary Ellen Castle. I may have mispronounced that. Oh, hi.
Who are you? Are you council members? I'm Mary Ellen Carlo and I'm the Grant Manager at Seniors Resource Center. So one of the reasons I came this evening was to thank you for your continued generosity and all the partnerships that we are involved in. With about 31,000 residents in the city, 18.7% are aged 60 or older and that trend will continue as the baby boomers age toward their seniorhood. So I just wanted to say thank you. We have a lot of new funding from Denver Regional Council of Governments for many different counties and so I'm just sharing that news for the Wheat Ridge seniors. And I also brought a little plug. We are having our first annual food truck event on Thursday, August 11th. So it's the day before the fabulous Carnation Festival. Please come. It's going to be on our campus on Chase Street in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Mary Ellen. Where did I come up with Ruth? That's all I have on the first section. Now we're going to move to the study session, open speaking, and that starts with Jean Shirley.
Jean Shirley, Wheat Ridge. Ten years ago, we met with a group, study session, actually, actually it was a town meeting. One person spoke about the stormwater drainage project and that rather than fee, you should tax it, just like West 38th Avenue. Don't fee, tax it. Ask the citizens if they want it first. Fee would cost, on the stormwater drainage, would cost over $100 a person, a property. The Lutheran project would be thousands of dollars. Called Bob Bupre's office at that time, it was based upon an EPA study, a toxic study, concluding that the farms, not cities, polluted the waters of Clear Creek. It's not a mandate. People thought, oh, we got to pass a law for it. To the people, it was a guide, it's a guide. They put out a lot of information and here's a couple from EPA. Here's a little sign that they put up on each storm drainage. Now these signs are not, not very good at this time because they either fell off and wore off. Each drainage had no dumping. This is a stormwater drainage system. So education is needed, but you don't have to proceed with this expensive cost and project. Met with the Jefferson County Health Department on a radon study. It was another wasted project that EPA presented. Brought up, John Moody's the fellow's name, Jefferson County. He says, I'm going to take my EPA hat off and tell you the story. Yes, what's the biggest problem with the stormwater drainage? Ponds that you see dug out behind businesses and properties. I said, no. He says, mosquitoes. They're big breeding grounds. So today I visited DTI Trucks across from Anderson Park. They have one. And I found out that some years, either the county or the city has to go put in tablets to kill mosquito larvae. It's a big problem. We now have three, three different types of mosquitoes giving out three different diseases. Here's a project that was a waste of time to begin with. It's like taking a bucket of sand, throwing it on a beach to keep soil in containment. How do you think that, how do you think that Clear Creek Canyon was formed? Erosion. It's, you got muddy streams to begin with. Thank you. By the way, rain barrels, four rain barrels, but can you imagine all the sediment water there that can breed mosquitoes? It's going to be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Britta Fisher's next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and our city staff and other elected representatives and our citizens. I wanted to talk about one of your agenda items on the study session tonight, which was the 38th Avenue Design. I wanted to give you a brief update. We had a Ridge at 38 Leadership Committee meeting last week. I wanted to say there was a lot of interest and including from some people who couldn't make that meeting. And Janice Hoppe, Councilmember Hoppe, and Mark Westburg gave a presentation talking about it and it was very clear and helpful for people to understand. There's been not a ton of information yet because you've been figuring it out, but that led me to a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. One, I recommend some serious outreach that if, whatever plan that you plan to bring to a ballot question, that you as elected representatives really talk to your constituents about why. So why, not just what, about the lanes and the sidewalks and so forth, but why? And why now? Because when those questions were answered, it made it much easier for people to understand the what. So I really encourage you to talk with as many citizens, as many business owners, and as many property owners as possible, because we know many of our property owners and business owners can't vote here, but they definitely are invested here and they like to be treated as the constituency that they are. I'd also like to encourage you to talk about why the compromise and what that brings. So not everybody gets everything that they want, so then you create a lot of unhappy people. But then talk about why it's important for everybody to give a little and move forward. So those are some of the takeaways that we had from the Ridge at 38 Leadership Committee meeting. I think people are just hungry for information and I know that it's been said before, but as much as you can involve the citizens and your constituents, I think the more likely you are to have success. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up, so I'm going to move on to the regular meeting, starting with item number one. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number one, the first opportunity for public input on the 2017 budget. The process for the development of the 2017 budget is underway. An important phase of this process is offering public opportunities to provide input to City Council prior to the presentation of the proposed budget. This public input meeting is the first of two meetings scheduled. A second opportunity for public input will be during the regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 22nd. Let me give you some dates. I won't go all the way into the background, but each year, the City invites the public to provide input for the budget and I want to share some dates with you folks. The 2017 budget is scheduled to be presented to the Mayor and Council on Monday, October 17, 2016, for first review and direction from City Council. For first review and direction from City Council, the city will hold a public hearing on the proposed 2017 budget on October 24, 2016. And the 2017 budget is scheduled for adoption on Monday, November 14. The proposed budget will be available online on the city website prior to October 17 meeting. The public is invited to provide input and the proposal for the budget at the October 17 and 24 meeting. There is no recommended council action for this. It's more just, you know, the announcement for it, the opportunity for input. So, Madam Mayor?
Okay. I'm going to ask if staff has made any comment about the budget at this time, and then we'll have questions of staff.
I just want to reiterate, as Councilmember Davis mentioned, that this is an opportunity for the public to speak as to what their priorities look like, what the council should consider as we start this process. We're at the kickoff point, so we don't yet have a proposed budget, and that's why this form of community engagement, public input, is so important. It's at the forefront of the process, and then we provide additional opportunities as we move through the process.
Are there any questions of council or staff at this time? We will continue. I'm sure there'll be lots of opportunities later. And now, I'm going to go to public comment, and I have only one signed up, which is Britta Fisher.
Good evening to everyone once again. My name is Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I am the Executive Director of Local Works. And being at the front end of the budget, as Heather Geyer mentioned, I just wanted to let you know what input we've received at Local Works that's helping to form some of our considerations for the budget. I also wanted to start with an invitation to any and all of you, if you'd like to sit down and talk about our budget request and what we are working on for 2017. I'm happy to do that with any of you, so please just let me know. So here's some of the things we're hearing. In general, events are going well. That's good, because we do over 60 of them in a year. People really do like having something where they can run into their neighbors, where they can invite friends to come and experience Wheat Ridge, to spend time and money here, and ultimately, that's our goal with doing these events, is to connect neighbors with one another and with the businesses, to help support a stronger community and an economically vital city. We also see the biggest progress in our Ridge at 38 events. That makes a lot of sense. We put the most resources into those events to be the large draw events for the Ridge at 38 area. In the past 12 months, we have attracted over 18,000 people to our events on Ridge at 38. That is up significantly from our first year when we started these events. And thanks in part to the investment that we made this last year, we started reaching the numbers where the businesses feel that success. The comments after the 2015 criterion were, "This was a really good step. We had doubled the event again, but we'd like to see even double of that." And so, we made those investments, like putting up the variable message boards, upping our marketing and our earned media campaigns, and adding a Brew Fest, which, Roger, we don't let them out with public intoxication. Chief makes sure of that. But, the beer does draw people. And so, it was a huge success with over 6,000 people attending. And we've seen that with all the events across the board, this increase in attendance. What we will do is also refine our other events and look at opportunities to support others brought to us. We have a lot of people tell us, "Oh, this event's great, but we should do this, and this, and this." Well, we have only so many that we can do, so we'll look at, you know, what can we maybe get rid of? What's not as successful in terms of investment as others? And then, where can we grow? For Ridge at 38, marketing and events, it seems to be working. We can't take all credit for the success of Ridge at 38 Main Street. It's a community, city, business, property owner, citizen-invested project. But, I do think that the indicators are really great, and I want to thank all of our business partners for the efforts they put in. You can see from the numbers that you've had before you, that since 2011, which was the year before the restriping, to 2015, which is the last year that we have sales tax full year data for, that on Ridge at 38, sales tax has gone up 70%. And that's a pretty compelling number, especially when you compare that with the general success that our economy has had in Wheat Ridge, which is great, but that was only 16% growth when you look at the whole city. So something special really has been happening on Ridge at 38 with the investment that we've put there. And that 70% increase represents increased revenues of more than $750,000 in it one year. So, 2015 compared to 2011 shows you that that growth has been happening. On some other fronts besides Main Street, our loan program. We have had renewed consumer interest and commercial interest in our loan program, and the biggest piece of feedback we're getting is that they would like to see larger loans. As you know, this council asked us to look at giving a larger loan to Wheat Ridge Gold to see if they could participate more in a method that they would be able to pay back to that revolving loan fund. And so, we're happy to do that, but that has been a request. It's also been a request at the resident level. And right now, our maximum grant for a residential loan is $30,000, and $20,000 for a general improvement project, but $5,000 if you add a bathroom, and $5,000 more if you add a bedroom. And what we're hearing is, the $5,000 kind of makes a difference on the bathroom and bedroom, but it's not really enough. That should be more like a $10,000 or $12,000 type of dollar amount to really truly be an incentive. So then, we'd be looking at residential loans in the $45,000 to $50,000 range as well, which is well within what we've lent out before. But that's some of the feedback that we've been hearing from clients and prospective TLC Wheat Ridge has been going gangbusters. I know it's grown quite a bit this year. We went from one East Wheat Ridge neighborhood to then the TLC expansion to include two more neighborhoods, and then this year, two more. So, with those five existing neighborhoods, in order to serve them in a continued basis, we need a slight increase so that we can pay for all of the dumpsters and partnerships in order to get the waste out and help with some of the carrot incentives that we do as part of that program. And also, I think there's opportunities that we've seen there as well. More neighborhoods want it. If we want to do that and continue to serve existing neighborhoods, we would need an increase in budget. And if we wanted to help out more in the commercial areas, right now, that's an area that has been increased quite a bit with the TLC program, and we could do some more interactions and work with those commercial areas as well. I think that's an area where we could grow. Dumpster days and block parties citywide have been going really well. The recent article has given us a bunch of applications this summer, so people really like that investment as well. And then, there's some other areas that I'd be happy to talk with you one-on-one, as we're trying to sort this out for the budget. One, I've had some current council members and former council members ask me about, "How can we get more for property investment funds?" We had gotten city dollars early on in our history to do that kind of work, and then that kind of dried up, and so we pursued federal and county dollars to do that kind of work, but now, in a good market, there's not as much for that. And the budget is constrained in general, but is there a way we could build our own fund, much like we have with the loans for property investment? Where, in the good times, we're putting away some money so that when there's bad times and there's good deals on real estate, we can pick it up so that we can reinvest there. So that's something that some of you have talked to me about. And then, community outreach and engagement. Those postcards that we send are super popular, and a lot of our partners who put on other events and other programs say, "Oh, we want to be a part of the postcard too." In order to have more postcards and do something in that size and include partners, we'd probably need more revenues. We've looked at how could partners help with the costs of those mailings. Most of them are on pretty limited budgets as well, but maybe we can figure something out where it won't take a lot more money, but probably a little bit if we wanted to get more people involved in that kind of engagement and outreach. Plus, we've had more requests for engagement in city processes. You have all been very inclusive. I've praised you from the same podium, saying, "Thank you for including citizens," and that takes time, energy, and effort to do that, as you all know very well. And then, the final thing I just wanted to mention is, we have been pursuing corporate and foundation and other grants, and for some of those, there are either requirements or suggestions of matching money. So that may be one of the things that we pursue as well. So at this point, I don't have all your hard numbers, but I'm very open for conversation about what you feel you've seen the most reward for, for our city, and what areas you're interested in exploring in the future. Thank you very much.
Counsel, while the Executive Director is here, is there anyone who'd like to ask a question about any of the programs she mentioned? But I imagine you could call her and have a one-on-one with her at any time. Is that be correct? I saw a thumb go up, so that's good. Okay, we can move on. I did not ask if there's any changes to tonight's agenda or any desires to do so, but I don't think you'd be yelling at me. All right, let's move on to item number two. Mr. Urban, would you please start with that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number 11-2016, An Ordnance Approving His Own Change From Commercial One to Industrial Employment For Property Located At 4949 Marshall Street, Case Number WZ16-04, Sit Means Sit, Dog Training. At issue, this application is for approval of a zone change from Commercial One, C1, to Industrial Employment IE for property located at 4949 Marshall Street. The zone change is the first step of the process for approval for redevelopment of this site under IE zoning. The purpose of the request is to allow for the use of the facility as a dog training and board, dog boarding facility, Sit Means Sit, which also requires a special use permit. The processing of the special use permit would occur following the approval of the zone change request.
Thank you. I do need an ordinance number, if the clerk has one?
I don't have one. It's because I have a new deputy clerk. That's bad. I don't have the ordinance number. I'll add it later.
All right, that'll be all right. Okay, let's open a public, this is a public meeting, I'm opening it now, and I need to swear any of those who will be testifying. Staff, is anybody speaking to this at all? The applicant, perhaps? If you would stand, please. Raising your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth as you know it to be? If so, answer, "I do." Thank you very much. So let's start out with actually staff.
Yeah, just a brief presentation for you this evening. I do have slides if you want to see any aerials or any other additional information. Just knowing that we've got the study session this night, I was going to be as concise as possible. So this, as Mr. Urban said, this is a rezoning public hearing for the property at 4949 Marshall Street. For the record, Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director, and I'd like to enter into the record tonight's, the contents of tonight's packet, the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and the contents of the case file maintained in our department. The property is located north of I-70 on the west side of Marshall Street. It's the last property before you get to the Clear Creek Green Belt, and it's directly across the street from the access to the Creekside Park. As stated, the requested zone change is from Commercial One to Industrial Employment. And staff is of the opinion that that requested zone change is very much consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. If you recall, really, for all the properties north of I-70, with some exceptions, really encouraging primary employment. And while this does have some employment, certainly for the drug, dog training facility, should that move forward, I think just looking forward in the future, it would open up other possibilities as well, should they not stay there forever. Historically, the property's been used for auto repair. It actually has a special use permit in place for that as well. They're authorized to do heavy automotive repair as well as bodywork, so a fairly permissive approval for that. The new owner, as was stated, would like to do a dog training and boarding facility, relocating a pretty significant facility. It'll have extensive training facilities and room for many trainers. The Planning Commission did review the request back on June 16th. They do forward their recommendation of approval, and the minutes from that meeting were included in your packet as well. And as always, we did also include the Planning Commission packet as an attachment to your packet. I haven't done a thorough analysis for you verbally this evening, but in that packet, there's really a thorough analysis of review relative to the zone change criteria, which is ultimately what you need to use to take action on this rezoning request. So I'll keep it to that, but of course, glad to answer questions.
I'd love any questions of Mr. Johnstone at this time. The applicant is here as well, if we need to ask questions of him. Mr. Kippers? He would be available?
Madam Mayor, while you're doing that, I can assign, this will be ordinance number 1599.
1599. Thank you. Okay, since we don't have any questions, do we have any public comment at this time? And I don't see anybody here. Applicant, I can close the public hearing, and then we can move on to the question.
Well, if you're going to have questions of the staff or the applicant, that's during the hearing. So take any questions now, thrari.
I didn't see it.
She meant the actual question, the main motion.
Pardon?
I think she meant the main.
Oh, the actual question, I mean, you bet. If you're ready for that, go for it.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and please, Mr. Urban, please give us a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 11-2016, An Ordnance Approving His Own Change From Commercial One to Industrial IE For Property Located At 4949 Marshall Street, on second reading, that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. The City Council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of the Code of Laws. The requested rezoning has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. The requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112.E of the Code of Laws.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Duran. Any discussion? If not, please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three. Councilmember Duran.
Title, Council Bill Number 12-2016, An Ordnance Amending Articles Two and Six of Chapters Five of the Code of Laws Concerning Residential Fire Sprinkler Requirements. Issue, one of the city's local amendments from the building codes were adopted on October 13, 2014, was intended to eliminate the requirements for homes to have a fire suppression system in keeping with other municipalities in the surrounding area. The deleted sections dealt with the design and installation requirements, but left out a key component, the deletion of the actual sprinkler requirement.
Is that all? May I have an ordinance number on this one?
This would be ordinance number 1600.
I should have guessed that, huh? I'm going to open a public meeting. We don't need a swearing, but I do need any reports from staff on this?
Yeah, I won't belabor the introduction too much, but just a little bit. In Council Bill 12-2016, as stated, proposes to not require fire sprinklers in residential one and two-family dwellings. So just a little bit of background on this again. Back in 2012, the International Residential Code was published by the International Code Council. That's something they do every three years typically, is publish new codes. And there was a new requirement in the codes that year that hadn't been there previously, which was a requirement to install fire suppression sprinkler systems in one and two-family dwellings. The vast majorities of communities along the front range, and I think this would probably go for many other places at the state and country, have amended that out of the code. So every year, when we adopt the codes, and we adopted the 2012 codes in 2014, we consider local amendments that kind of fine-tune those codes. Some of them are administrative in nature, some of them are based on fees, and some of them, just fine-tune them for the needs of our community, which are unique from the International Code Council, which obviously is a much larger population that it covers. And it was the intent, in terms of the discussion with council at that time, that we would eliminate that requirement. Unfortunately, our bad, we got that wrong, right? We eliminated the requirement from the code that showed the design requirements for residential sprinklers, but the section that actually required the sprinklers was not eliminated. So we think, and, but obviously, we have some new faces on council, so it's certainly a policy question whether you want to do this. Fully regard that, but because that was really an error on our part, we wanted to bring this back to you for consideration, to verify that your policy intent is still to eliminate that out. Various policy reasons, as I'm sure you're all aware, you know, why you would want to amend that out. It's certainly expensed to homeowners or to builders that pass that on to homeowners. But there's a couple other, I think, more important reasons. I mean, I think there's a risk that the system could fail and result in significant water damage to a structure. The insurance in- The insurance industry actually has very mixed feelings about this requirement, because while it may have some arguably public safety benefits, that, that risk of exposing the property to damage from water damage is a significant cost impact if it were to happen. And I, I think another, from a policy perspective issue is, these systems require long-term maintenance, and you're asking that of a, of a single-family homeowner, who may or may not know what that means, they may or may not do it. And as such, when that fire, when that suppression system actually has to perform, it may not, right? So you may be setting yourself up for an unsafe situation where someone thought they had that protection and they actually don't, because the system didn't work. Looking 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, and is that system maintained? Because it's, it's, you don't know, right? You don't, it doesn't get used on a regular basis, obviously. Having said that, I think it's also important to acknowledge that, that, you know, this fire safety is an important issue, and we're not trying to take it lightly. And there's many sections of the code that, that are adopted that protect people and structures from the risk of fire danger, whether it be something as simple as smoke alarms, or the types of materials that are allowed, various fire separation requirements, I think very importantly, egress requirements, so that in the event of a fire, there are multiple ways to get out of a structure and out of sleeping quarters. And the list goes on. You know, requirements for how we regulate mechanical systems, and, you know, venting requirements, and fire stopping requirements between floors, so that fire doesn't spread between floors easily through gaps. So there's lots of sections of the code that really minimize significantly the risk of property damage, loss of life, in the event of a fire.
With or without a sprinkling system?
Correct.
Okay. That was interesting. Anyone else want to ask any questions, or at this time? We don't have any public, no one has signed up. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public meeting, and I need a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill number 12-2016, an ordinance amending Articles Two and Six of Chapter Five of the Code of Laws concerning residential fire sprinkler requirements on second reading, and that it take effect immediately.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hoppy. I don't think, please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Pond, will you read item number four?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to introduce item number four, Resolution Number 27-2016, a resolution giving notice to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder of the city's intent to participate in the coordinated election to be held November 8th, 2016. At issue, as the City Council has potential to refer a ballot question to the electorate of the city at the November 8th, 2016 general election, the city of Wheat Ridge is required to formally notify Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder of the city's intent to participate in that coordinated election. Is a motion in order?
Well, we can go that quickly to that, since we probably aren't gonna have any comments from staff, and I think it's just a matter of the business of taking it forward, so let's go ahead and do that.
I move to approve Resolution Number 27-2016, a resolution giving notice to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder of the city's intent to participate in the coordinated election to be held on November 8th, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Urban. Thank you. Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Hoppy, would you read item five?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The approval to authorize payment of $45,077.86 to the city of Edgewater for 26th Avenue paving and installation of bike lanes. The Public Works Department is requesting authorization of payment to the city of Edgewater in the amount of $45,077.86 for the city of Wheat Ridge's share of the paving and restripping of 26th Avenue between Sheridan Boulevard and Wadsworth Boulevard.
On this one, we may have a staff commentary or report? We do.
No staff report, Your Honor, if there's any questions of the council.
Counsel, do you have questions of staff in regard to this? You're just, that's fine. Then I believe a motion would be in order.
I move to authorize the payment of $45,077.86 to the city of Edgewater for 26th Avenue paving and installation of bike lanes.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Duran. Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
That concludes our business portion of the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead with city manager's matters. City manager was acting, our city manager, Mr. Johnstone.
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Attorney, city attorney?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Elected officials' matters?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Ms. Hoppy?
No, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some, an announcement that I'm announcing on behalf of the Wheaties Academy and Ms. Millie Nadler. So, the Wheaties Academy is now on its second class. I think last year was their first class. It's a program of local works. Wheaties Academy provides dedicated community members across generations and geographies with inspiration and skills to turn ideas into action from the ground up. With support of mentors, civic leaders, and community members, participants learn how to creatively address challenges in Wheat Ridge by using community heart and soul, that's a trademark, focusing on possibilities and bringing passion to what we do. So, the Wheaties SAS Group Project this year, as a part of the program, they've formed a group that is focused on sustainability, arts, and service. They created a public art project that encourages all members of the community to get engaged and show their community pride. Their goal is to distribute 300 foot and half har, 300 foot and ha, foot and a half hearts to, I'm like, foot and half, foot and hearts, that's weird, foot and a half hearts to residents and community members in Wheat Ridge, and have people decorate them and display them in their yards or windows. We hope that whenever someone goes for a walk, that they see a few hearts. They plan to engage businesses, the City Council, and community leaders, kids, seniors, and as many members of the community as we can. They hope that this project spreads throughout the city and becomes a symbol of our unique culture, heritage, and love for Wheat Ridge. They will be handing out the first set of hearts with instructions on Friday Night Live, which takes place this Friday, July 29th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. on The Green on 38th Avenue, 7101 West 38th Avenue. So please stop by and pick up a heart to decorate. If you'd like more information, you can contact Millie at M, and I'm gonna just spell her last name, N-A-D-L-E-R, so M-Nadler, at macramedia.net. M-A-C-R-A-M-E-D-I-A dot net. And also, I would like to challenge all of the council people to a contest in ourselves to be decorating hearts. So I'd like to challenge us all to get a heart and game on. We'll, we'll, I don't know, we'll have to come up with something and present it at the meeting, and then plant it in our yards, but that's my challenge to all the council folks. And mayor.
I was hoping I was in.
Yes.
Great.
And city.
And staff.
And other elected officials.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you wanna try to top that?
Nothing for me.
Nothing? Okay, we're going adjourned to a study session. I believe it'll take a little bit of time to.
Just, just a little bit to.
Do you wanna take?
Open up a new document.
Counsel? You wanna stay here? Thank you.
Just a couple minutes.
Just take a couple minutes. We'll be back here. Go ahead.[1154.91]
And we start with. Sorry, let me get here caught up. Thirty-eighth Avenue Streetscape. And I saw it looks like we have a report from Mark Westburg.
You do, it's pretty quick, it just sort of summarizes what's in the memo that was included in your packets. So I'll just run through this really quickly. This first slide is just all the things that were part of the consensus, I'm not going to go through all of these, but this is where we landed last meeting, last couple of meetings that we've had on this issue. And so those are all the things that we're planning on doing with this consensus as we move forward. We have done conceptual cost estimates. It looks like to repave and restripe Thirty-eighth Avenue is going to take a little over $600,000, $646,000. We're proposing that that come out of the 2017 CIP budget, which at this point is being proposed at $2 million. So about a third of the CIP budget would be spent on Thirty-eighth Avenue. The street's due for an overlay, it's been due for a year or so now, it's not in bad shape yet, but it's getting to the point that we need to do this, and so we've just been kind of holding off while Thirty-eighth has been in flux a little bit. We didn't want to overlay it and then come back in and do something else. So we're proposing that we do that with those funds. The Thirty-eighth Avenue Sales Tax Project, as I'm calling it, we've got planned to be $4.5 million for that one. The way that breaks down is the green looks like it's estimating out a little under a million dollars, about $910,000. The Streetscape project itself is a little over $2 million, at $2,074,000. The curb cut consolidations, what we have left of the 4.5 million is a little over a million and a half, so we have 1.5 and 16,000. So we've got 1,516,000 left to do curb cut consolidations, so we'll get into that a little bit more. So what the Streetscape involves is the first two things are sort of the amenities and then the pedestrian lights, which is 408 for the amenities and then 784,000 for the pedestrian lights to swap those out. The crosswalks and the ramps, we think are going to run around $600,000 total for that element. And then what I termed the aesthetic enhancements, I made this up, we've priced out at $282,000. So we're going to talk in the next couple of slides about the amenities and the aesthetic enhancements, about what those involve. But just in round numbers, these were the big numbers of what those sort of four elements of what was in the consensus are running for the entire corridor from Wadsworth to Harlan. So the amenities, the 408, what that includes is those little retrofit islands, the things that are less than 250 feet long, priced out at about $117,000. Converting those amenity zones that used to be the on-street parking, that concrete area up against those three little blocks of buildings, we priced that out about $291,000. And that assumes we have to remove the concrete, we're going to investigate whether we can keep that concrete in place except where we're putting the trees in. But that assumes it's sort of a worst-case scenario, we'd have to remove that concrete before we start doing new construction. The aesthetic enhancements, what those include is things like the public art, and we have our 1% of the cost of the project, so $45,000 would go into the public art. Certainly if more of the existing public art balance wants to be spent on Thirty-eighth Avenue, we could certainly spend more than 45 grand, but we're obligated by our code to spend at least $45,000, which is 1% of this budget on public art. The gateway sign that's planned for Uppam and Thirty-eighth Avenue there at the northeast corner, we've estimated that about $40,000. We'd like to put bus shelters in, that was one of the proposals out of the 2014 project, we think that's a real good proposal to have our bus shelters in at all the bus stops along this corridor, again, from Wadsworth to Harlan, and that would be about $115,000. And that would just use our city's standard bus stop shelter, so if one of those gets hit, we can replace it readily with the things we're using elsewhere in the city. Then the landscape features, if you remember from the consensus drawing, we had some big green sort of asterisks on there. Those were on private property, three locations on the north side of Thirty-eighth Avenue between Harlan or between Pierce and Uppam that we'd identified, mostly between High Court and Pierce, that we identified on private property, we have some easements, we have to get some additional easements, where we could try to do some landscaping at those locations in order to try to balance out all the stuff that's being done on the south side. So that priced out about $82,000. So the curb cut consolidate, and one caveat on that would be that on all of these, this would all require hand watering, none of these budget items include taps or any things, because what we're doing is so scattered, I mean, a tap alone is going to be 20 or $30,000, and so it just didn't seem feasible to try to do a tap for an isolated project. We're doing an entire Streetscape project like they have on the east side from Harlan to Sheridan, of course, and we did taps, we do irrigation system. But these numbers assume hand watering for all the stuff that's being planned. So the curb cut consolidations, the total estimated cost for those is a little over $2 million. And since we have our available budget, as I mentioned earlier, is a little over $1.5 million, we think we can, with that money, we could get 70% of those done. And quite frankly, with the voluntary nature of these and the difficulty sometimes in pulling these off, I think if we can get 70% of the curb cut consolidations, I'll be thrilled. So if we can do that, that'll be great. Certainly if we had more money, we could budget for all, 100% of them and try really hard to get them all, but we think there's probably going to be some holdouts on that. What we'd like to do is prioritize those by the date that the easement comes in. So if we get more than 70%, we would do the first 70% that we actually get the easement in hand that shows that they've come to an agreement on what they're going to do between those properties, or if it's a single property getting their curb cut consolidated, as soon as they give us an agreement that says they're willing to do it and we can go in and do it, we need to, then we'll do that. So I think that hopefully incentivizes some of folks to move quicker rather than slower on trying to get these pulled off, and we'll certainly set up meetings and do things to try to facilitate that. But ultimately, those are agreements between private properties if they're sharing driveways. So just the phasing of this, again, this is our little diagram showing the consensus plan from Uppam to Harlan. The phasing will be in 2017 redo the entire corridor, you'll notice the arrows extend outward, we would do Wadsworth all the way to Sheridan, except those portions that are concrete, we'll just scrub the striping off of those and then restripe those. But the rest of it would be overlaid and striped the way it is today, except for between Uppam and High Court, which would have the on-street parking on the north side. So in 2018, we'd like to focus on getting the green done and also getting the stretch between Uppam and High Court done, that's a sort of a high-impact area, and we want to focus on, we're proposing to focus on that in 2018. In 2019, we worked between High Court and Pierce, and then in 2020, we worked between Pierce and Harlan. And we divided these up based on sort of the logical, what we call logical termini, it's a great word, isn't it, logical termini? Sort of a good place to start and stop projects, and also based on the funding stream that would come in, so we're going to look at that funding stream next. So again, in 2017, the stuff we can do next year, because we don't have any sales tax next year, that starts, if it passes, would start in January. With out of the maintenance budget, we would do the $646,000 to repave and restripe Thirty-eighth Avenue from Wadsworth to Sheridan. And then in 2018 construction, we're proposing again is to focus between Uppam and High Court. We estimate those tax revenues will be $1.5 million, because it's a third of the total 4.5. This is the breakdown of those four elements for the part that's between Uppam and High Court. And then what we would have left of that 1.5 is we would have enough to do what I would call a Phase One of the green, about $568,000. And then we would need $342,000 of the 2018 dollars to finish that off, to finish off what I would call Phase Two of the green. What I'd suggested in the staff report, which is certainly a viable option, is we just, we do all the stuff that's sort of on the street first, and once we get that $342 out of the 2018 dollars, or if 2017 comes in higher, as soon as we got the money for the green, we could do all the green at once. Something I thought about as I put this presentation, that we could break the green into two phases and do the stuff next to the street first, and then do stuff down by the school later on, again, trying to avoid doing that work while school's in session. So those are sort of two options on how we proceed on how we phase in that green project. I think either one of them work, certainly the stuff at the street, we could go ahead and start right away, since we're already up there working in the street area. From High Court to Pierce in 2019, we would take the 2018 tax revenues that are left, which is in this case, a little under $1.2 million. This is how that section breaks out with those four different elements. You can see the ped light part of it's becoming a bigger deal, because we're doing more of them, because the segment's much longer. And then what we'd have left is about $809,000 to do curb cut consolidations, and we would only do the ones, again, in that general construction area where we're at, and I did include the western end, I took it to Uppam. We only have one curb cut consolidation west of High Court, so we could try to lump that in, if they're agreeable to doing it, we could go ahead and lump it into that 2018 construction, it just, the costs go up a little bit for that. Or we can go back and catch that one curb cut consolidation during the 2019 construction. And again, with that funding, we would be able to do 75% of the curb cut consolidations in that segment of the corridor. And again, I'd be thrilled if we had three-fourths of the people all agree to do that. I'm an optimist, but I'm still thrilled. In 2020, then, we would do the Pierce to Harlan segment, which would have that full $1.5 million available. Again, you'll notice these are the three things that we're doing in that segment, the ped lights, the crosswalks, and then the aesthetic enhancements, in this case, are just the bus stops at the senior high-rise, at West Highlands West. So again, you'll notice the ped light becomes a big part of this budget, because again, we're doing a much longer segment in this case, and so there's a lot more pedestrian lights to do there. Curb cut consolidations, I've got it at $910,000, and I put a plus sign there, because if we don't get them all, if we don't get enough of them in 2019, then we can use that money in this segment for 2020. Again, this would just be Pierce to Harlan, and with those funds, we could do 67% of them in this segment. So the sales tax, again, is a quarter of a percent increase for three years, expected to generate $4.5 million, $4.5 million. So there was a comment made at the last meeting, what is in the ballot language today, what is part of the consensus, is that anything above 4.5 million goes into just our general CIP fund, which I'd love to have any of those dollars come into our CIP fund. But I don't think the idea of creating a Thirty-eighth Avenue Maintenance Fund is a bad one. I think we are going to have maintenance involved in this that is not currently part of the park's budget, we've got a lot of hand watering to do out there, if we do all the baskets and do all the little retrofit islands and we get those landscape features, and if more people want to do those, then we've got those also. So I don't think it's a bad idea to put that extra money into a Thirty-eighth Avenue Maintenance Fund, it sort of keeps all of whatever comes out of this quarter percent sales tax in Thirty-eighth Avenue, which I think is not a bad idea. So staff, at least this staff, is proposing that we create that separate maintenance fund instead of just lumping it into the CIP. So that, again, is not part of the ballot language today, or the consensus. So the ballot language talks about a quarter percent sales tax increase for three years, and in the ballot language, it does say up to $1.8 million for the first year, and that's just to hedge our bets that if we get more in the first year, it's part of the ballot language, they get 1.8 that first year. Right now, the expectation is that we get $1.5 million for three years, but I think this is a Tabor thing, I'm not an expert on this, but I'm guessing this is a Tabor thing. And then the amount for the next two years is unspecified, it's just whatever comes in, comes in, and we'll do that until the three years is up. It starts January 1st of 2017, ends December 31st of 2019. And again, what the ballot language says right now is that anything above 4.5 million goes into the CIP. So the deadlines, you've seen all these before, is that Friday this week, we have to notify Jefferson County that we have action for the general election, I'm guessing maybe this is actions, based on how the second part of the study session goes, and I'm guessing that our city clerk's office takes care of this one.
Already done, earlier in the meeting.
Thanks.
Passed the resolution doing that. We're on it, Mark, we're good.
So on August 8th and 22nd, we have first reading for the ballot language, and then second reading for the ballot language. And then on September 9th, the ballot language itself is due to Jefferson County, and because I took something off, which is tonight's meeting, we now have room at the bottom of the slide to put down the fact election day's on November 8th. So it seems late this year. So our next step is change whatever you guys want to change at this point, and then by August 22nd, we'd make whatever those changes are, and we prepare the ordinance for the ballot language. We've got three renderings, we talked about in the presentation, the renderings weren't quite done yet, we're still tweaking some things on those, so they weren't ready for tonight, we were hoping they would be, but they're not ready for primetime yet. And then we also, from the traffic engineer, from Mueller Engineering, we will also have the actual capacity for Thirty-eighth Avenue with three lanes. We'll have that information for you also on the 22nd, when we come back to see you for the ballot language part. So that's my presentation, and you guys are welcome to discuss and do whatever you want to do.
I expect our discussion's going to be around all the many, many parts to this, as well as if we do want to consider making a maintenance fund out of any extra cap funds that come in. So who would like to start with? I really got Mr. Matthews there first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, and one thing, and I hate to bring this back up again, but as I've been studying on this, it still appears to me that we're narrowing the street. And so what I handed out, so we all could have a reference to look at, is the first two pages of that, section 5.20 is out of the Charter, and then the section 21.3 is out of our codes. And it says, "Flow line is the measurement from inside edge of one curb to inside edge of the other curb." And where we're putting in these islands and these bubble outs, we're changing the width of the street, I don't see any way around that. Street reconstruction, I see nothing in that 250 feet that we've had bandied about for the past couple of months, this refers to actual the street width, the 250 feet talks about what is construction or what is reconstruction of a street. And if we're going to do this, we'd need to follow procedures, and I'm not sure we are. And so street width is measured from flow line, and there's public hearings required, and there's a lot of stuff we need to go through if we're going to change a street width. So I would, I cannot see why we aren't considering putting the horse first and then before the cart. And I will let Mr. Dahl respond at least to that part of it, of why, how are we legally not actually changing the street width?
Whether we're changing the street?
Sure. Charter 5.20, as has been pointed out, indicates that when you change the flow line, that's how you measure street width. But you have to read the whole section of Charter 5.20. The second paragraph, which I think is already in front of you, also in front of you and has been highlighted, tells you how the flow line can be changed, and it can be changed either by construction or reconstruction. That's how you read those two paragraphs together, otherwise, you'd be in a circumstance where if you move 10 feet of gutter for some reason, you're changing a flow line, and therefore it triggers the whole charter. No. You change flow line by virtue of either constructing a street, or reconstructing a street. As I think we're aware, the historic kind of basis for Charter 5.20 was the widening of Thirty-eighth Avenue on the west side of the city and chopping out a fair amount of people's front property lines. And that was probably a reconstruction of the street, wasn't a construction of a new street, but quite likely a reconstruction. And that's what led to this language of construction and reconstruction being the way you determine if you're altering flow line. So you take that language, and it says when you construct or reconstruct, that triggers this process. But then, of course, if you go to the code, which is the next page, and it's been handily highlighted, and I appreciate that, in the handout, you'll notice that the council has acted in the code to implement the charter provision by defining what street construction and reconstruction is and isn't. If something isn't street construction or reconstruction, then it takes it out of the scope of Charter 5.20, and that is what council has done in implementing the charter. And I think I've mentioned to you a number of occasions before, that councils have the authority to implement their charters, and it's common, we were, City Charter has a lot of provisions in its code, excuse me, the code has a lot of provisions, that implement other provisions of the charter, and that's commonly done in rural cities, and that's what was done with code section, and I think that's 21-1, if I'm not mistaken, and it's in chapter 21. And so what that does is defines then what street reconstruction or construction is and what it isn't. And as we've gone over before, it made the determination that if you're constructing or reconstructing more than 250 feet, that's street reconstruction or construction, Charter 5.20 triggered, you're off to the races. The paragraph that's not highlighted, but it's right in front of you, goes on to say certain particular activities that aren't considered street construction or reconstruction, and therefore not within Charter 5.20, and that's the landscaping, traffic calming devices, XL, DCL, and these were all pretty heavily discussed in the late 90s, when this code section was written. So the key here is that street construction or reconstruction has to occur to be able to trigger the charter provision. The council acting under its authority to define what that is, did so by enacting the code provisions, which carve out some exceptions, clearly, I mean, that's what the code does, and gives you this 250-foot bank. Council in the late 90s could have said 200 feet, they could have said 300. I've many times told you that, of course, a council can't by ordinance undo a charter provision, but it absolutely can, and there's case law is long in this state and others, it absolutely can implement charter provisions and give life to them and add mechanisms, and that's what the code provisions here do. So yes, it's true that the flow line is probably altered when you do landscaping, it's true it's altered when you're doing traffic calming, it's true when you're reconstructing to the 200 feet. But the council has decided, and has put in the code, that that doesn't rise to the level of the kind of street construction or reconstruction that they believe were the intention to be triggered by the charter. And that was a decision council made in the code, obviously council could change this code provision if it wished, but right now, that is the law, because the council as a whole adopted it.
So I'm understanding it's all around the definition of construction reconstruction?
It is.
So your conclusion is this is not a change in the flow line?
That's correct, if you're within the, what I'll call the exceptions to street construction and reconstruction that the code sets out, and if you play fair within those exceptions, then you're not triggering flow line for Charter 5.20 election, et cetera, purposes. Actually, it's supermajority vote on council, and then election purposes, and you're all aware of that system.
Well, okay, again, looking to those same paragraph, and it says the exceptions is where you do not change the general street width, and we're changing the street width.
But the first sentence clearly says-
Well, the first, the first number one exception, it says constructions of modifications to a street such as landscaping, traffic calming, traffic claiming, calming devices, acceleration or deceleration, which do not change the general street width, by putting these bubbles in, we are changing the general street width. So that exception there, I don't think applies. And as I went through the other two of the three exceptions, it appeared to me that we are doing a street reconstruction, we are narrowing the street and changing the street width. Item two was restripe activities where no curb exists, which reduce lane width for traffic calming or to provide for bicycles and do not change the number of motor vehicle travel lanes in general, that is an exception. If you're just improving drainage on the side of the street, that's not a street reconstruction. But we're, I think we well pass the 250-foot street limit on what we're doing for street reconstruction, do we not?
As designed, I don't believe that's the case, I mean, I've spent a fair amount of time sitting down with staff and alerting them to the fact that they have a 250-foot budget, and they need to spend it wisely if you're going to play fair with the code provision. And I believe that they have, I believe that where you have traffic calming- I believe that where you have traffic calming, I think you, those are things you can do. And you also can reconstruct up to 250 feet, which by its very nature...
Improvement of an existing street or improvement of more than 250 feet. We're going from Wazworth or Uppam down to Pierce. That's certainly more than 250 feet.
But, and I know that you know, and I, we both know, that the changes are in pieces. And it's the addition of those pieces together that are other kinds of activities that aren't reconstruction, that don't change flow line anyhow, that you have to add up. And that was gone over, you know, in some detail at the study session. I understand and appreciate that you don't agree. All I can do is tell you that I believe there's a budget here which is being appropriately spent, and I absolutely get it that we can honestly disagree over whether that budget is available or has been spent right.
Okay. I'll accept your legal, I don't agree with it, but I will accept for this purpose, is right now your conclusion. I'll consider it.
Thank you.
There's some questions. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Westberg, the plan is, which you just presented, is a four-year cycle. Could, is it within our capability to move faster if the money were there?
Yeah, certainly. If sales tax comes in quicker than a million and a half dollars a year, that we could move some things up. I think, again, that whole thought of logical termini is that we sort of do between Uppam and High Court, and we do between High Court and Pierce. It'll be difficult to sort of, you know, if we get 1.8 million dollars in the first year, then actually the way I've got it set up, we need to spend that all between Uppam and High Court and the green. And then if we got more money, then do we take it, instead of going from High Court to Pierce, do we go to Marshall or to Otis or Reed or something? It's just with the logical terminus, it seems like it might be better to do it that way. And again, if we don't spend all the, if we don't get enough curb consolidations in, we'll have extra money that we could then use that last year to try to do more of those. It's just, we just don't know how this is going to play out. There's a lot of unknowns on this.
Okay. Ken, I guess, I'm not sure really if this is a sort of an unexpected question or not. Was bonding considered by staff? Since interest rates are as historically low right now, it would cost us very little to actually bond, and we could move faster, could we not?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think staff was really driving the framework for this. So, you know, it seemed like with the, you know, the bonding is often questioned, and we've reached in other communities, so I think the logic was for the question to be successful or be, have the best chance of being successful on the ballot, was that bonding was not the best option.
Other, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I might have more later, but I just wanted to ask, as we're commenting on this, if you guys could maybe put in your opinion on what you think about the maintenance fund that Ms. Voss had brought up in her comments, and if you think that you would be agreeable to that. I would be agreeable to putting it into a maintenance fund until the expiration only of the sales tax.
Do you want to continue that part of questions about the various portions? I don't have a response to that. So, let's start with that. The maintenance fund, is there an agreement, or I want to discuss that a little bit? I think one of our citizens brought a good suggestion to us, and it might be pretty viable for us. Ms. Davis likes it? Yeah, please go ahead and give me a consensus. You scored by. Okay, so that is one of the things that we would change on this ballot question, is that the additional funds beyond the 4.5 million would then go into a maintenance fund to keep up the amenities.
Question on that, if it's, let's just say for round numbers, it's $50,000. Does that end then when the $50,000 is spent, or does it go to an escrow fund, or no, what are we, how does it get, does it work in, at some point in time, that 50 grand is going to run out, and then who's going to maintain the improvement?
Then I think, to go back to general fund or to CIP, which is what's maintaining streets now by and large. So, I think you're absolutely right, though, once it's, once that's been spent, because there will be an end, it's not a renewable resource. Once it's been spent, then, then like all other city capital improvements, it would have to compete for funds in the CIP fund.
I think there was also some discussion of a business development group on 38th Avenue, which would do a little of that maintenance.
Sure, although you'd have to, you'd have to have a structure for that. You know, you'd have to have a BID, or you'd have to do something more, or the business owners along that street would have to do something more in the special district, special assessment arena.
One of the reasons I ask that is Parks and Rec, I think, right now is taking care of a lot of the work with maintaining those temporary stuff we've got out there. So, is that, does money have to be transferred to their budget in order for them to do that in perpetuity? And we're just looking ahead.
Sure.
I don't think we've thought about the details, other than, I mean, if a business improvement district or something like that were to be created, I think there would be opportunities to potentially leverage the funds to maybe get funds through a bid as well. But what that exact maintenance structure would look like, I don't think we've looked at.
Madam Mayor.
Certainly, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. As it relates to, you had mentioned not having a tap on 38th to access and having to water these amenities by hand. Has there been discussions or interest in approaching the school district and trying to coordinate some sort of tap with the school district to access or dedicate some kind of tap for the city to utilize for our purposes along 38th? And working with the school district to say that because we're investing close to a million dollars on their property, that they would give us access to their tap, or somehow we would have some sort of memorandum of understanding with them, that they would give us unlimited use or some sort of arrangement with them so that we can somehow make some kind of mutual agreement of some kinds, to say that we're investing in their property and therefore there should be some kind of arrangement? I'm not sure how that would be set up, or whether we have other arrangements similar to that in other parts of the city with them.
Well, we've certainly, we haven't, the quick answer is no, we haven't specifically talked about that. I think we've had some very preliminary but very good conversations with the school district on a couple of occasions. So, we do believe they're very much on board for doing a partnership on the green, and they've indicated a willingness that it would be a partnership. And they've done this before with us and with other communities, so they certainly have some models out there of what that looks like. But we just haven't gotten to that level of detail. You know, they have acknowledged that, you know, if they had some capital maintenance scheduled for the green that same year, they might be able to, you know, dedicate that money to the project potentially, if that was in line with their CIP as well, so.
And then that brings up another question relative to the maintenance of the green, that we would want to make sure that there's a long-term agreement or understanding that it's the school district's responsibility to maintain, and otherwise somehow maintain that property as it is the school district's property. We may be investing in it and otherwise fixing up at this present time, but it's their property and they need to maintain it, and to make sure that there's some kind of agreement moving forward and understanding or...
That's certainly been the agreement thus far in our agreement. I think at some point, depending on how much it's going to function as a city facility relative to their facility, just depending on what those improvements look like and how much programming is in it, you know, I can anticipate that they'd want to have a conversation about, you know, who is the appropriate party to maintain it or share maintenance. So, again, on that one, we probably just haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. But for now, they have been continuing to maintain it even with our use of it.
Well, I'd like to at least look at some way to encourage some kind of either water tap or other type of arrangement for the city to either share use or otherwise gain access in some way to water along 38th, whether it be through the school district or some other kind of entity along 38th.
Any of the things that are going to be landscaped that are immediately adjacent to the school district, I think that's definitely a possibility. I think even the stuff across the street, and certainly stuff farther down the street is going to be, we'd have to look at the cost of what it would take to connect that up. It may make it cost prohibitive, even just crossing the street with, you know, lines. Because these, again, these things are so isolated in nature, but we can certainly look at that. We can do a cost analysis and talk with them about what might be possible. I think it's going to be tough to do anything except right adjacent to the school. I think that definitely is something we could talk with them about.
Ms. Duran.
On June 6th, Councilman Urban, on behalf of our citizens, presented a four-lane design option to add along with the revised retrofit design on the November 8th, 2016 ballot regarding the design of 38th Avenue. The majority of council did not support that plan, and the consensus was no. On July 11th, on behalf of our citizens, I presented and asked for a consensus to place a clause to the ordinance that if the revised retrofit plan was defeated on November 8th, 2016, 38th Avenue would be repaved and striped to a four-lane, to four lanes in both directions, with the through turn lane where permissible. That consensus was not supported by the majority of council, so the consensus again was no. With that being said, our citizens have asked me to take the council's concerns and develop a separate ordinance, in finding a way to mutually come to a decision together and to finally put closure to 38th Avenue that is so desperately needed. So, I present a new consensus this evening. In the event that the streetscape design for 38th Avenue is defeated on the November 8th, 2016 ballot, the following action will take place. On or before June 20th, 2017, a separate ordinance for 38th Avenue from Wazworth to Uppam will be repaved and striped to a four-lane configuration, which includes two lanes of traffic in each direction with no continuous turn lane. The cost of repaving and striping has already been budgeted for in our capital improvement fund, so no sales tax increase would be needed for the project. I would like to get a consensus on this ordinance.
Is there a discussion? Ms. Hoppy?
I pretty much stand in the same place where I was last time, in that I feel that anything that we put out there opens the door of semantics, which is fireplay for both whether you support or don't support the Main Street ballot question as we're looking at it. And I feel that that is a discussion that we should be having after the ballot, and we should give it its own chance to go, and then after that, we should be having this discussion. And so, I won't be able to support it tonight.
Mr. Matthews.
Well, I think one of the reasons that we're asking for this ordinance and this to be considered now is all of the anger that was generated after the last people voted no on narrowing the street, and then they were just ignored. And I would suspect that from your viewpoint, perhaps they may be suspicious that they're walking into the same trap again, and they're really going to vote no because they think they're just being taken advantage of again. I mean, how many people have come up to this podium over here and said, "Why haven't you put the street back yet? What's going on? What wool are you pulling over our eyes?" And that's why there's been an attempt here going on to try and let the people know that if they vote no on this again, that they're going to get what they expected the first time around, and that was to put the street to the prior configuration or something close there too.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to this suggested ordinance?
Just one brief comment was, you know, the citizens listened to what all of you had to say last week. The number one thing was you wanted a separate ordinance. You didn't want a clause within the ordinance. They also recalled Counselor Davis's remarks that we should have something resolved if the ballot question failed. There should be a four-lane, or 38th Avenue should be paved to four lanes. So, and they also wanted, they also heard the extended deadline, they also heard that you didn't want five lanes through there or a continuous turn lane. So, I think this really shows an effort on our citizens, trying to work with council and saying, "Listen, all we ask is that if this ballot question is defeated," it may not be, we don't know, "but if it is, we have some resolution for 38th Avenue." And that's that it is striped and paved to four lanes. That's all they're asking, and that's what I'm asking on their behalf. I think it's a fair, it's a fair thing to ask for. If you really want to make this a legitimate ballot question and to show that you are listening to them, you would have no problem putting this as a separate ordinance on there for them. It's not attached to the question, that was the issue last time. It was attached to the ballot question. This is totally separate. So, I ask you to really consider doing the right thing here and putting some resolution to this issue of 38th Avenue on behalf of our citizens.
Do we have more discussion? Mr. Urban?
So, we're in a study session, this is a consensus, and we're asking that this ordinance be considered as a consensus so we can move it forward for consideration. And the purpose of this ordinance is choice, that voters are given a choice of action, not inaction, not stalling, not obstacles, but choice, that there be given a path forward, and that choices are being given to the voters so that at the end of the day, that the voters can be given a choice of going one way or the other, and this is that choice. And I think that the discussion about compromise and being willing to consider both sides of the coin and being considering everybody's viewpoints lies in considering this consensus and giving it its due consideration. And understanding everything that we are asking of the voters in November, it's important to give them these choices and help them understand that while, yes, we do need a sales tax increase on the one hand for some very important projects, there are some other projects that may fall into the want category, and I feel as though this 38th Avenue, Main Street project falls into the want category. And by providing this separate ordinance, it gives them that opportunity for a choice that says people may not necessarily vote for this want category of a project. And that's just this sort of me reading the tea leaves, and it may not be the case. Everybody may go forward and vote for this project, and they may vote for everything else that's on the ballot as well, and that at the end of the day, we might get everything that we want. But by giving people this choice, it allows us to move forward with action at the end of the day, and that's, I think, what voters deserve. And I think it's a fair question, and it doesn't hurt by having it available out there because no matter what happens at the end of the day in November, it's going to result in action and allowing us to move forward on this question of 38th, so that in November, we don't have to come back to this question. We can be done with it and have a plan to move forward.
Ms. Wooden. At the end of the 2B ballot question, this council decided to go ahead with the Create Your 38 process, which was to go back to the citizens and ask them again what they did want. And the results of that was that a three-lane configuration was overwhelmingly preferred to the people that took the time to go to 38, create your 38 process. And the other things they wanted was slower traffic speeds, safety, wide sidewalks, trees, and amenities. And that's what this plan is giving us, and that's why I'm going to support the ballot question as it is.
Ms. Davis.
So, I want to speak a little bit broader, because on the next agenda item, we also have the DIRTT task force. And I think we're keep using the word want, and we keep, and like to me, I know a lot of us, when we're looking at budgets and how we spend our money and how we allocate our money, do we allocate it to need or do, you know, or want, or maybe 75% will go to need and the other 25% will go to want? And I think that was, and we had a lot of people with the previous ballot question come up to the ballot and say, "I wanted the three lanes, I just didn't want to spend that kind of money." You know, so I do think, you know, although, and I'm hoping, you know, of course, the vote will go how we all hope it'll go, and it'll mirror what the folks who were in the Create Your 38 process showed us, because I think it was a large group. I think, you know, from my perspective, it is a, going to be an interesting election in more ways than one, because I know there's a lot of folks asking for money, and I know we're going to be one of them, and at least one ballot question, maybe two. And I just want to share... And I just wanna share an email. It's, "Hi, Christie," was from a gentleman who recently have moved here. "My wife and I and our eight-month-old daughter recently bought a home in Wheat Ridge in March in your district. We moved to the Create Your 38, we moved here, Create Your 38th was in full swing, and we believe we were moving to a forward-thinking community with a plan to turn 38th Avenue into a great mixed-use pedestrian-friendly corridor. We are extremely disappointed with the recent news of the city council, council deciding to scrap the Create Your 38th plans with less desirable. But we are young professionals looking for a vibrant, growing community. We thought we had found that in Wheat Ridge, but I'm beginning to think we were wrong. Very unhappy with this. Don't even get me started on the whole 300-ballot measure. Hope that you can provide some insight." So I wanna go back and say that I did provide the insight, and I explained to them that a lot of times our voters tend to be not money-averse, that they, you know, to, to increase taxes and those types of things is not always on the voter yes ballot question. And I think it is. A lot of it, people are very, you know, again, it's about needs, it's about wants. And I think that the thing with this ballot question is, is there's more to it than just the three lanes and the investment. And I think, again, as Britta Fisher had mentioned on just our budget, it's something about getting out there and communicating to our community what this three lanes means. We already heard that from 2011 to now, sales tax is up 70, that's 7-0% on the street. So it's not as if it's created a drain. In fact, it's helped our city from expense-wise. But, you know, I do, I understand what they're saying, what you're saying about the four lanes and the options. But I do think it is something that we should make a decision after the vote and, and really, you know, push, or not necessarily push, but educate folks on the Main Street idea. I, I know this is a bigger thing, but I even hesitate, if we're not doing curb cuts, if we're not doing those types of things, do we put it on the ballot and we just try to budget it over the next few years and spend more money on the DIRTT, or spend more efforts on the DIRTT task force? My worry is, is just like 2A and 2B, that one may take away from the other, and that's an aside from this. But I think there's a lot of angles we have to look at, and I think our goal with all of this is to be successful in updating our community. When I did email this gentleman back, he totally understood with why we compromised because the last time that budget was just too big for people to handle. But I do think there's a lot of parts to this puzzle, and it's, and it's not just about three lanes. It's about where our city is willing to invest right now. The last study session, we just heard about new development over on the Cabela site that might need $40 million worth of infrastructure so that they can be successful in getting our new businesses there. There's a lot of things going on in our city, and, and so it plays a factor in some of, you know, our voters' choices.
Okay, thank you. Any other commentary? Nope. Do you want to go ahead and take the consensus? Those who are supporting, if you're supporting the... Please, go ahead. Raise your hands if you're supporting the suggested ballot, or the ordinance, excuse me. Okay. That one did not pass. You know, now that it's, that that is, there is something else that I'd like to say. Have to hand my club over. If you put in there something else, I don't think you're supposed to talk about something after it's passed or not passed, so I'll scrap that because we're not allowed to that. Give me my club back. All right, moving on. Are there other questions that we want to ask about the, what was presented? Let me see if there's some others since you've had an opportunity, if there's some other questions to Mark about what he all presented, the breakup, the timing, or anything like that. And we've settled the question as far as we are, we're gonna do... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I still have the question.
Of course you do.
Didn't go away. Mark, we have money in here, $910,000 for the green, kind of a generic. My question really relates to the amphitheater. And how much of that cost is gonna be allocated to that structure? Because I assume it's a lot more expensive than grass, so most of it's gonna be in there. And what is this proposed seating capacity and stage capacity of the theater?
You know, we haven't looked at that in detail. What we've done, we've looked at sort of in general, the plan that was, that was flashed up, and I have that, was just this size of amphitheater, which is, which is given the room that's available, it's what we can do. The seating is the retaining walls. If we flatten that project out a little bit, we've got to build some little retaining wall, so we're sort of doubling up with retaining the dirt and also providing some, some seating there. Certainly, that entire green area could, people could bring chairs and sit down and be able to see what's happening at the amphitheater. The amphitheater right now is planned on being at-grade, so it's just special paving. It's not, it's not, there's not really a structure there. It's just an at-grade thing. Certainly, if someone wants to do a concert or something, they could bring a platform in and set a shell up behind it and do all the kind of things that I used to help set up back when I was in orchestra. So, you know, certainly those kind of things can be done. There was a, there was a thought in the previous, in the 2014 design that that area might be able to be set up, that it could be a little ice rink area or something, the amphitheater, because again, it's just an at-grade. It's an area of special paving where a lot of different things can be programmed and done. So again, it's just a special paving area, and then there's some retaining walls there. And so what's in the budget is sort of all those things added up together.
And as, as an aside also I have here, I had a citizen call me, and we still have that language in here under conceptual design about raised crosswalks. I know we talked about it last meeting, that there are not going to be any raised crosswalks, but maybe if we could get that out of there, the people would not, I think they're concerned that there's gonna be traffic calming raised sidewalks up and down the full length of 38th. So if we could just get that out of there for the next score round.
If that's the language, then I apologize. I'll make sure that comes out. Oh, it does say raised crosswalks.
Okay, I think I'm looking, unless there's another question, I'm looking for a consensus to accept the draft ballot language as presented, except for the changes that were suggested. Is that correct?
Can I make some suggestions? I've been making notes as you've been talking about this, and it occurred to me that, that there may be three, three things that you want to include. We're in conversation with bond folks earlier today on the other matter. And when you have more than one year right now in the ballot language, you'll notice it says, whatever additional amounts are raised annually thereafter for two years, even though that's pretty well set out in the last paragraph, what, that it's actually three years. The suggestion that we got was that you always say, for an additional two years is just opposed to two years, so that you've got the first year, which, you're right, that is a Tabor thing. You've gotta say what your estimate is, so that there's no confusion about whether it's a three-year term or it's two years from January the first, you know, 2017. So I would suggest that. That's easy. In the last paragraph where you talk about the spillover to, right now, the CIP fund, if I'm right, I guess I'm hearing that you wanted the potential for language to reserve that to a maintenance fund? Because I've written some language, if that's helpful. So instead of such rate increases raised above 4.5 million to deposit it in, instead of the City Capital Improvement Program Fund, what I've written anyhow is a maintenance fund restricted to the revitalization improvements described herein. So it hooks it right back up to just those improvements. Then lastly, and again, this is sort of standard Tabor language. You'll notice at the end, "Shall the revenues raised be collected and spent by the cities of voter-approved revenue change?" Typically, after you say, "Shall the revenues raised by such sales and use tax rate increase?" And then you add, "And any interest and investment income therefrom?" Because of course, when the city raises funds, it puts them in accounts, and those accounts, you know, draw interest. And sometimes they're invested in approved government investments, and that throws off money. Not a lot, but it, and then the, you need to be sure, if you want to, and typically you do, that that, not only what was raised, but any interest or investment income can also be spent for that purpose and under that ballot question. Those would be the three changes that I would recommend.
Ms. Pond?
Can you restate the additional language on maintenance fund?
Sure. In the third paragraph, the third line of the last paragraph, delete the words "the City Capital Improvement Program Fund" and insert "a maintenance fund restricted to the revitalization improvements described herein."
So, let me just ask, if that's so narrowly specific that it means that you can only maintain the things that have been recently improved, and you couldn't use that money to, to, to maintain other items on the street? If it is that narrow, that language, I would be less comfortable with it. I think my, my support for the maintenance fund is that it can be used for 38th Avenue.
I see. Okay. I admit, I agree. It's, it's restricted because when I talk about the revitalization improvements described here, and I'm talking about the stuff that's in the bullet. So, I mean, that's how it's written. So you're right. If you wanted to broaden it, we certainly could.
And how would you, how would you change that?
Something like a maintenance fund restricted to maintenance of the, maintenance of 38th Avenue between one location and another.
Wadsworth and Sheridan?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah. Would you be, maintenance of amenities added or something like that?
No, just 38th Avenue, Wadsworth and Sheridan.
Yeah, if you want the whole street, and that's what I'd say.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
I had a question relative to the bullet point where it talks about the three-lane Main Street Business District. Because it uses the word district, are we somehow creating a business district by the passage of this ballot question? And is that a proper use of the word district?
Yeah. No, and probably no. No, I don't think you're, you know, creating a BID because of this whole process for that under statute, and obviously you're not following that. But the term is a little misleading.
Creating a fund and we're labeling it a district.
Yeah, I mean, you're, by creating a, by referring to it as a three-lane Main Street Business District, you're, you're not creating a legal entity or, or anything like that. So my answers are no and no. But my answer is no to your second question, which is, is, is that really how it ought to be written? Because it's a little misleading. So you probably, because business district, you know, applies that kind of formal structure to others. So maybe a three-lane Main Street business...
Area?
Zone, area, probably area.
How about take the word business out altogether?
A three-lane Main Street district?
Main Street district?
Three-lane Main Street?
Right, three-lane Main Street to include amenities.
Well, you already know it's Uppam to Harlan, so you don't need to, you know, you already know that, because that's what it says. So you could certainly say, "Three-lane Main Street to include," yeah, just make it simple, take out business district.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with those additions and subjections?
So just to be formal about it, I'll offer a consensus to, to accept the draft ballot language for 38th Avenue with the additions that were just previously noted, which is to, to add the, and an additional two years, the reference to a maintenance fund in the last paragraph, and interest and investment income notation, and the deletion of business district language.
Show of hands? Okay.
Did that get recorded? I know people probably want to make sure they're on the record for that. Did you record that? Did you watch?
Yeah, there, it'll be written down. I guess it would be good on the audio to say that that consensus passed 5 to 3.
Was that the case?
It was 6 to 2.
That's why I asked.
Six, oh, 6 to 2?
Yeah, that's why I asked. Okay. All right. And what council, what it will now do is take this language and it'll take the form of a first reading ordinance for the first meeting in August, second reading ordinance, second meeting in August. So that, and that ordinance will be the notice and call of election that will also have ballot language in it, you know? And we've done that many times. It satisfies the Secretary of State's election schedule.
Okay, let's move on to item number two. Can, will you be discussing this first?
Yeah, I'll try and tee it off for starters. So, potential ballot language, or number two relates to the DIRTT task force, which has been an ongoing conversation over the last several months and with city council as well. So we're here tonight to review draft language in that regard as well. That would forward a ballot question with a sales tax increase for three specific projects. And we've got a few, I think, substantive issues that are embedded in the ballot question that's before you tonight. One, the project list. We need to firm that up with you tonight in terms of the descriptions and the three main projects that are in the proposed ballot language. The funding scheme, just reconfirm that the half-cent and with a 10-year term with a sunset is the direction. And then the question that we've begun to have earlier tonight, but the question of whether to bond on this, on this ballot measure, which probably looks a little different than it does in terms of some of the implications than it did on the 38th Avenue project with the phased approach that Mark outlined this evening. So the project list, we have Clear Creek Crossing, which was alluded to tonight as well. We've proposed to have 10 million in funding that would be a portion of the remaining infrastructure that's needed out there. $40 million was referenced, which is a good number. That's really the, the transportation infrastructure for the entire project. As a phase one, that would facilitate some development that we're contemplating out there with a developer that's engaged on the property, would facilitate the new hook ramps on and off of I-70. And that's a very specific project that's been vetted and actually designed, and one that we think would be, have important economic development benefits, and would really potentially jump-start that project. So that's one of the projects. The Ward Road station area, the various improvements, infrastructure improvements that could catalyze development around the city's one and only commuter rail station, the end-to-line station at Ward Road, is the second category of projects with a total number of 12 million. I think during the DIRTT task force discussions, that was kind of somewhat guesstimated, but to be between 8 and 12 million. We've actually vetted that project a little more at a staff level in terms of individual projects within, within that area. Various road improvements, pedestrian improvements, potentially a pedestrian bridge over the tracks to be able to have the people on the south side of the station more readily access the station as a transit facility. So the, that can actually be diced up a little more. So there's probably projects within that $12 million number that range from well under $1 million to probably up to $4 million as standalone projects. So, so that, that project list is a little more scalable if for some reason that $12 million would change. And then the Wadsworth Reconstruction Project, another project that's moving forward. We're in the middle of an environmental assessment for that project. The city has dedicated Dr. Cog federal transportation dollars to the tune of $25 million that are scheduled to fund over the next, or to flow over the next several years. And are, you know, we're expected to have a decision on the environmental assessment sometime next year. We have a commitment of a minimum of $6 million in local match, as with any kind of Dr. Cog tip transportation project. It's a 20% local match minimum. We anticipate, based on the preliminary cost estimates right now, that that could be significantly more than that, because any cost overruns could be the burden of the city if we can't find other federal or state dollars to, to fill those gaps. So those are really the three projects that we're looking at. The funding scheme, you know, city's council's direction to date has been a half-cent, and that it would sunset after 10 years. And that's obviously the language that we've included in the current draft of the ballot question. question, but just wanted to put that out there one last time as we look at the ballot question. And then finally, bonding. We've used George K. Baum to do an analysis of if we were to include language to bond this revenue stream, what would that look like? And the estimates are that, based on the interest rate assumptions that they've used, and George K. Baum is represented tonight here, Allen is here, if you have questions or would like him to present and kind of explain his methodology and go through that analysis. But it would generate $29 million in principal with a total repayment cost estimated at $34.5 million, and that's the language that's currently included in the draft for ballot language. So, again, if you'd like Allen to present after I wrap up here shortly, he'd certainly prepare to do that. And thanks for coming kind of last minute. We've also had a chance to review the language with our bond counsel, and that really kind of occurred over the weekend and today. So, we have actually some amended language that we'd like to present to you this evening. I don't think it's necessarily substantive, but important changes based on Sally Tasker, our bond counsel, that we've used on a number of occasions, working with Mr. Dahl to fine-tune some of the language, so we can hand that out whenever it's appropriate. So, that's my kind of brief introduction, and obviously, we're all here to answer questions about specific projects. If you have more questions about specific projects that would fall on those three categories or any others.
Mr. Matthews has indicated he'd like to start.
Thank you. Some months ago, I forwarded a letter to all the council members and the city staff from Wheat Ridge Water District in regards to Wadsworth reconstruction. And the director there had indicated that he could have costs just for water relocation on the Wadsworth project up to $6 million. And I'm sure that's not included in this estimated $7 million, which may be the corporate city cost, but there's another potentially $6 million sitting out there for some of the citizens' staff to pay for. And they'd be looking at raises over 50% to their water bills for some number of years in order to pay for that reconstruction. Have we addressed that at all? And I would certainly like to not keep that swept under the rug, so to speak, that there's that elephant in the room of $6 million just for water.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that that water district has been planning to replace those lines, and this reconstruction project may actually present an opportunity to have a pretty effective partnership. Like most water districts, they build up a capital reserve fund to address unnecessary water replacement lines. I can't speak specifically to how much money they have in the bank for that project, but it's definitely a water replacement project that, to my understanding, has been on their radar. And the reconstruction could actually present a pretty, I think, interesting opportunity to get it in a location under wherever they want to be in that profile of the road that makes the most sense for them, and I can't speak to what that is.
One of the issues you raised was that if we put that median, instead of replacing one line, it's got to put in two, one on each side of the median, and that's one of the things that was driving up the cost on that, on the relocation.
And I don't know if Scott or Mark can speak to this more specifically in terms of the design, but I think there's an opportunity for a positive partnership, particularly on costs such as traffic management where...
If there are grants coming in, that the city work with them to get that process started, to see if he could reduce some of the cost and burden to the citizens.
Certainly. Any other knowledge about the two lines?
I could just add that, what Ken described there, this is really a good opportunity to, for the water company, if they had planned, to replace their mains anyway during this reconstruction is an opportune time to do that because when we rip up the street, it's not just the water lines, it's the other utilities also, and there's a lot of those underground there. And this gives us an opportunity to coordinate that, whether it's Excel or the gas company. Sometimes this is an opportunity for them to replace or upgrade their facilities. So, as we go through the environmental assessment process and then get into the preliminary design with our consultant, these are things that we take a close look at, you know, get a good handle on the costs. Also, you know, where should lines, if they are replaced, should they be moved somewhere that works out better with the other utilities, you know, replacements and so forth, and even the traffic staging during construction? These are details that are yet to be figured out, but again, with a reconstruction project like this, this is a good opportunity to do these things at a cost for the individual utilities that would be much less than if, you know, they had to go in and do it on their own as a separate project.
More discussion on this? Mr. Fitzgerald.
Ken, I think I heard you allude to the fact that there's a possibility we could get grants for the $7 million, or for a portion of the $7 million for Wadsworth. Is that true?
Sorry? We don't know what the total gap is going to be. It could be, you know, significantly more than the $7 million. We just don't know yet. We're looking with Dr. Cog and with other, you know, federal transportation funding sources to see opportunities to fill that gap, but there's going to be a minimum local match commitment to receive the 25 funds. So, really, $7 million, I think, is a...
So, we have to do, okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a possibility of even being larger than the seven?
Certainly.
I had another question here.
I was just going to clarify that.
Okay. Ms. Duran.
Thanks for working on this, and I think that this is clear and it's concise, and the, I say, I'd like to say, answer some of your questions, which is yes, I do like the half of one cent, yes, I do like it for 10 years, yes, I do like these projects, yes, I do like the bonding. And then I'm open to, if anybody else would like to consider, I'm opening, I'm open to possibly lowering the Gold Line Station area and adding a fourth project of Anderson Park for the estimated $3 million, which is what we looked at when we were looking at the recommendations before.
Mr. Pond.
I'll withhold my comments for a second, just ask a procedural question as we kind of get into what seems to be language adjustments that may be necessary because of bond language and taper language. Also, potential requests to add things like a fourth project. How we will go about massaging this within the timelines that were previously presented, if those could be brought back up on the screen, I'd appreciate it. The timelines for how it's going to come, first and second read, and the deadline for submittal to the county, so that if we're working, we either have to solve all of this exactly, word for word, tonight, or we don't, and I would appreciate a little bit of education for all of us as to how we can navigate through this on those timelines. But Ken, can you bring that back up on the screen? The timelines?
The timelines for...
Oh, from the previous presentation?
Yeah, it's just one slide on that one, just to get those dates up.
Two final ballots, it's close.
It may be too hard of her. Did you let Mark get out of the building?
I can just tell you what they are.
All right, that's fine.
Pretty simple, really. The ballot content is due to the clerk-in-the-quarter by September 8th, I believe. So, that means that you have two, well, you've got basically the month of, you've got now a month of August. And so, what we'll do tonight is we'll take the draft ballot language you've already given us in this new ballot language, that will go into an ordinance that I've already drafted and will just plug it in, that is the notice and call of election. We've already advised, because you've just done it already tonight, the county clerk-in-the-quarter that we're going to participate, and that deadline's July 29th, so you've made that deadline, check that box. Your next deadline is to get that language over to the county clerk-in-the-quarter first week in September, so you really have two meetings in August to do that. And so, what we'll do is put those two ballot questions into a form of ordinance that's the notice and call, saying hello, we're giving notice that we're going to have a special election on November the 8th, we're going to coordinate it with the county, here's who's eligible to vote, and you've got to live here for now 22 days, not 30, interestingly, got changed. And here are the ballot questions, the ordinance will say. You'll see that ordinance on first reading, your first meeting in August, which is the 8th. You'll pass it on first reading, I assume. You could certainly make first reading amendments if you wish, they're rare but perfectly available to you. You'll see it again on second reading, final hearing on August the 22nd. And I'll make the ordinance effective upon adoption, so we don't have that 15-day, you know, problem for standard ordinance, is you have the power to make them effective on adoption, it's not an emergency ordinance. So, I guess, Mr. Pond, my point to you is you'll have really two opportunities for revision, August the 8th, first reading, August the 22nd, second reading. And once you're done with second reading, everything else is administrative. We certify it to the county, make sure the font size is the right size, they always tell us that it's wrong, we have to fix it, stuff like that. But those are your two windows of opportunity, August the 8th and the 22nd after tonight.
Ms. Duran, are you done, Mr. Pond?
Well, no, I'll come back with my other stuff, that's all.
Thank you. I do support the point 50, over 10 years and bonding if necessary. And what I would like to echo is Counselor Hoppy's thoughts of if we can reduce the Gold Line amount and put that over into Anderson Park, I think that was $3 million, renovation of Anderson Park at $3 million, I would support that also. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Mr.?
Thank you. One thing, just as a clarification, when we talk about the Gold Line Station area, do we need to clarify that to say the Gold Line Light Rail Station area? Or that there's no definition that it's...
I agree.
It has a formal name, which is not being used, so I'm wondering, that was one of my comments, like it has a station name.
Yeah.
Right. And I don't know if that's something that we need to clarify in there, and then, the other thing, each one of these statements kind of describes why it is that we're doing this. And the Gold Line one, it talks about to facilitate redevelopment and economic enhancement opportunities. And so, that phrase, "economic enhancement opportunities," is different from enhanced redevelopment opportunities in the second one, which is different from the third one, which is sales tax generation, generating redevelopment site. And so, I don't know if there's a way to better, and I'm sorry, I'm just kind of throwing these out here, I don't know what the better way to align those benefits are, to make them more sort of streamlined, to say, these are the specific benefits that we're deriving by investing these dollars. But to me, that would suggest that those are three different types of specific benefits that we're deriving, but it's sort of all one and the same. So, I don't know if there's a way to better describe that by saying that it's all redevelopment opportunities, or it's all sales tax generating redevelopment, or some way to better describe it in a way that is uniform across these three things, so when people look through this, they can see we're investing in the Gold Line area to invest in redevelopment, to increase our redevelopment opportunities, to increase our sales tax generating opportunities, somehow better flush that out. But I don't know how to, I'm not coming up with a great answer for that, but somehow to better flush that out. And this is a question for the city attorney, do we have to start the question off by the statement, shall the city Wheaters debt be increased?
Yes, you do. That's in the Constitution, actually. I got caught on that once, actually, so the minute you get caught on something, you'll never forget it. And yes, that's mandatory language out of the Constitution, we have to start it with that. At the appropriate point, it might be helpful, because Mr. Matlos is here, to have him maybe give you a level of comfort about why the numbers are, as they are, the 29 and 34 and the 3,000, the $3,700, based upon the, you know, sales tax projections and bond runs, which is way above my pay grade. But I think it might be helpful for you to hear that, I don't know if now's the time for that, but I'd encourage it.
Invite.
I'm sure Allen's been back there making notes about the four things he wants to say.
Allen, would you give us your...
Sure. Allen Matlos, George K. Baum and Company.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what I was tasked to do was to look at the half-cent sales tax and try to determine how much that might generate in bond proceeds over a $10 million bond issue. And it comes to about $29 million. The challenge we have is, and this is on every ballot question, or several, first is, you're asked to be, put together language for a ballot question today, but if you borrow money, it'll be sometime in the future. Interest rates are at historic lows, so we always want to anticipate that interest rates might go up during that period of time. So, we tried to do is provide a little bit of room in the ballot question. Already, bond counsel, you know, we joke about attorneys went to law school because they said there'd be no math, but already I've been commented by bond counsel that maybe my numbers are a little off, so I'll speak to that, which is fine. But today, if the city went out and borrowed money, and I was actually conservative on this, hard to believe, the city could borrow at an interest rate of about 1.7% for 10 years. Probably actually better than that, but I was trying to be conservative. So, when asked for these numbers, I increased it to 3.5%, which is kind of a double. Now, you would normally say, well, that's a huge increase, but because we're so low at these rates, that's tricky. The other thing to remember is, when you borrow money for a short period of time like this, you don't pay a lot of interest. So, if you look at other questions, if you look at the Jefferson County School District question, if that ends up on the ballot, you'll see, you know, a giant principal amount and a really, really big repayment number, and that's because they're looking at borrowing for 25 or 30 years or something. So, there isn't a huge difference between those numbers. But, that being said, you know, these are just made-up numbers, and they're not set in stone. We are, when we work on ballot questions, we are big fans of keeping the first number under, you know, under those thresholds. So, we're not, never big fans of asking for, you know, $30,500,000, when you could ask for $29,999 or something like that. So, this is at 29 million is about the number. Today, a half-cent sales tax, and I have a question about this in a second, could generate probably more than 29 million. I don't know if 29 million is the number or not the number, that's just the number I came up with. On the previous presentation of a quarter-cent sales tax, the number that was used was 1.5 million. When I asked Patrick what a half a cent would generate, I was given the number of 3.5 million, so there's a disconnect there somehow, so I want to make sure I'm not making a mistake and overestimate. So, we have all of these numbers. We have the, shall the debt be increased part, then we have the total repayment cost part, and then we have the annual number. And the annual number is in there as an estimate, just like in the other discussion, of how much tax revenue will be generated in the first year. We try to give a little bit of excess there, because if you generate more than that, then you're in a rebate situation, and you have to figure out how to give that back. And typically, for sales tax, that means some sort of a, you know, no sales tax day, week, month, depending how much off you are on the tax. So, I tried to be conservative but didn't give too much of a number. You know, generally, voters want to know, as you've done here, specifically what the money is to be used for. That's wonderful, that it's very specific. They prefer smaller tax increases over larger tax increases, hard to believe, and they prefer those taxes to sunset versus going on perpetuity. So, all of those things here are being included. I'm not sure if, the one number I would question in my quick math was the maximum repayment cost in case we do see a jump in interest rates between when the question is put on the ballot and when money might be borrowed. And, because that would just require... And, because that would just require then it, the principal amount to decline. I did some quick math, and it, rates could go up to a little less than 4%. Probably make that still work, but...
And the, and the 29 million and the 34.5, 34.5 million would still work?
Yeah, but it, it's the tightest of the numbers.
I see, at 4%, going up from 1.5 now?
Right.
I see.
It was the title of the number, so you might consider a slightly higher number there, just to give yourself some wiggle room.
Alan, it may be an unfair question, because I don't think you added this language at the bottom of the, you have, but the council might be interested in learning what the, the premium percent language is about, and I know that wasn't yours.
I actually have, I don't think I've ever seen that in a ballot question, so, so there you go.
All right. Because bonds are sometimes sold at a premium?
Yeah, but that's not what that is.
Okay.
That's redemption premium, I believe.
Right, if you, if the city decides to redeem early.
Right, so generally, bonds have the ability to be paid off early. I, I have not sold a bond issue with a redemption premium probably in 10 years, so, if you don't want to have redemption premium, you could easily take that out, and I wouldn't be too concerned.
And just say the bonds can't be redeemed early, period?
Yeah, that's, that's a language, it's extra words, you know, a lot of times, because, if you look at the language in this question compared to proposed language for sales tax increase only, the first thing you'll notice is how much longer this question is. We, we often refer that in the bond business as a much uglier question than a sales tax only question. So, sometimes, just deleting a few words is helpful to make the question slightly shorter. Just to be clear, we at George K. Baum work on a lot of ballot questions, I think since Tabor, not just in Colorado, but in other states, I think we're up to 850 or something, bond and tax questions, and I just wanted to be clear that probably none, or maybe a very few voters, will be making their decisions to vote yes or no based on the reading of this question. These questions are, are hard to understand, there's a lot of unusual words in there, I didn't see "herefore" or anything like that in various one yet, but usually they're there. And so, it's the effort of kind of informing voters about what the projects are, and whether they should, you know, if they're going to vote yes or no, but reading this question is very difficult, it's just, it's just long conversation.
So, Alan, would it be fair to say that, while the 29 million dollar numbers, that, that kind of matches up with a need of the city and a list of improvements, and that's where that came from? But I guess what I'm hearing from you is maybe increase the 34.5 slightly in the event interest rates really went up, so maybe to 35, something like that?
35.5 or something.
Okay.
You know, that's just, you know, what we have here, though, is another, we're, you're trying to kind of wrap, kind of borders around the ballot question, so, how much you can borrow, how much tax can be generated in the first year, the total repayment, and then at the bottom, there's a total tax collection just above the red part on the bottom, which is, I don't think it's necessary, but it's, it's nice to show that you've got that, and you set the term at 10 years. So, you don't have that many places to move this, you've kind of created the box, and, and the concern then is, if we do have a jump in interest rates, that, that can constrain the amount. I will also say that for the last seven years, I've been coming to meetings like this and telling people that interest rates are going to go up, and they have.
Still have.
So, I've been a liar for the last seven years, just to make it out.
Yeah, keep it up.
Am I also right in thinking that, and again, we probably want to, because we've got a couple more drafts of this, or we've got two iterations of the ordinance that will approve this, but in terms of going forward tonight, I'm almost thinking that maybe we could leave out the language about early redemption.
Right.
It's probably unnecessary unless we're going to sell bonds where you can, they can be earlier redeemed, and, and you're saying that's not the market right now?
You would want to include an early redemption, because the, the hope is that if this is placed on the ballot, that sales taxes would be in excess of the estimate, and then you could pay the bonds off early. It's a wonderful thing, and I, I've had many of these projects in my career where, you know, money is borrowed for a period of time, and then the sales tax comes in quicker than we thought, and you come back and say, "Look, we thought this tax was going to be in place for 10 years, and it was only seven years, so look at what a great job we did."
So, early redemption is, early redemption's fine, you just don't need to identify that in the ballot question, is that what you're saying?
Right, that seems like a question for bond counsel more than...
Okay, fair enough. Thanks. Questions?
Alan, I'm assuming that we borrow the entire 29,000, at, 29 million, thank you, from the get-go, right off the bat, and the reason it could be more than the 3.5% is because by the time we get through the election and all that, so it could be a lesser amount if, if it holds right now.
That's, I, Mayor, that's actually a really good point, and I should have brought that up. So, one of the requirements that the city will have if it moves forward with this is, when money is borrowed on a tax-exempt basis, there's, you have to believe, you have to re, the language is, you have to reasonably believe that you will spend 85% of the proceeds in three years. If for some reason, there's like an engineering reason or something like that, that you don't spend the money in three years, that's fine, but when, at the outset of issuance, to make the bonds tax exempt, you have to reasonably believe you spent the money in three years. Last November, I worked on the ballot question for the city of Sheridan for road improvements, 31 million, and they're borrowing their money in two pieces. So, we did 18 million earlier this year, and then the other 13 million will be later on. That made it even harder for me to figure out what interest rate to put in there, because it's over a couple-year period, so I don't know how quickly 29 million dollars can be spent on these projects. So, that's something to think about as well in terms of that intro, of that maximum repayment number. The other thing to remember, which is, which is, you know, interesting math to me, but probably to no one else, is if you set that 10-year period, and you do the first bond issue, say, right away, and then the second bond issue is eight years, then that second one, you're borrowing only over an eight-year period, and that's a shorter repayment period, so the payment goes up. So, just understand that as well, so there's a little bit of, there's a few scenarios here we might, I mean, I'd be happy to run, just to kind of see what the implications are.
Other questions? Ms. Davis?
So, thank you for this information, so, some of my questions you sort of answered.
You sort of?
Yeah, well, you did, but I'm just going to still mention something. So, I know you said, "Most of people don't vote off of this language, they vote off of probably what they hear and stuff," and that was one of my first things, in the, in the ballot language, it says, "And shall the city of Wheat Ridge's taxes be increased by 3,700,000 annually?" I was just thinking to myself, "I like it read, I think it reads better," but again, you guys are the experts, that it says that we put, "Shall the city of Wheat Ridge's rate of sales tax and use tax be increased by," you know, because then at first you're not, if, if I'm a Wheat Ridge resident, I'm not thinking that's going to be on my property tax or something.
It is, it is often that we have a reference in a sales tax question to no increase in property taxes, something we see in some of these ballot questions.
Yeah.
Within the ballot question.
Something to think about, there's a reference here specifically to sales and use tax, or another reference to, this is not a property tax.
Yeah, without raising property taxes, shall, would sales taxes be increased?
I almost liked that, because when I first read that, I was like, "Ah," you know, but then when you read a little further, it's like, "Oh, sales and use tax," so it kind of made you breathe a little bit. And then, I just want to comment on the gold line station area, I do feel that the cost, total cost, the 12 million, needs to be allocated there for several reasons. One, I don't know if anyone's been up in Arvada lately, but their gold line looks like it's ready to roll, it's really nice up there, and it looks like they've invested a lot of money, and I also know what we invested on the corner of Youngsfield and I-70, what was that, 8, 9, 7 million, just on that little corner? It was a lot of money that didn't seem like it went very far, so I think, you know, like 12 million, when it comes to, you know, when you start doing construction and streetlights and those types of things, doesn't go horribly far. So, I think that that's a reasonable investment on, in that area, and I think lowering it, I, you know, kind of discounts the area, I mean, we've got tumbleweeds at our gold line, and Arvada's almost ready to roll. So, I just, I just would encourage that we keep that investment there. What was that, do you remember what that Youngsfield?
I want to say it was maybe half that, maybe close to 4 million, somewhere in there.
It was five.
Five.
It's still 5 million on that corner that really didn't seem like much was done, at least driving it, it doesn't, I'm sure it was, but, I mean, it didn't change that area, you know, too much, I mean, cement and changes, and I know we had a lot of construction slowdowns and those types of things, but, I mean, it's, you know, for just that little change, I mean, okay, so it's 5 million, that's, you know, that's, it's a lot of money, so...
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Herman.
Um, as it relates to any additional revenues that are generated above and beyond the elements that we have listed here, where do those monies go, and how, where are those allocated, and how do we account for those, and what are those spent on, and how do we handle that?
I think it's a good question, particularly being cognizant of the three-year requirement, I, I don't think they go anywhere based on how it's currently structured, I think they, they can be spent, I mean, we've, we've been cautious to use the word "estimated" so that we could move money amongst these three project areas, but beyond that, I don't, I think they, I'm, I'm not sure, Jerry, if you have thoughts on that?
Well, if there were excess, uh, there's a limit of 35 million, of course, so what you're saying is if it only costs 33, and there's 2 million excess, all right?
Mm-hmm.
It would have to be somehow spent for these three bullet points, because those are the only three, so you'd have to sort of go back and say, "Hmm, is there anything we like, would like," but if you truly couldn't think of anything more, then you probably have to refund. So, uh, there's two ways around that, I think, probably, one is the one you did in the prior questions, just to have a, if there's excess, after all, excess underneath the 35 million, and after you've done everything, then here's where it goes, actually say it, in the other one you did maintenance, or be very certain that, that honestly, you could, even though you've got three things here that you've listed with estimates, you know you could spend more than 35 million, and, and if you're certain of that, that's out of my league, probably Scott's, then you're okay, and you don't have that risk, but I think it's a fair question.
Well, I, I think within these three projects that that's feasible, what I'd just like to make sure of is that, that the language is such that the, the money is only to be used within these three specific projects?
Yes.
And that the money could not be used for any additional?
No, you couldn't put it in the general fund, do anything else with it but that, because that's, that's what it's for, it's clearly earmarked.
And is it something that we could say then in that first paragraph, that the proceeds of such debt and such taxes to be used exclusively for these three projects, or?
Sure, at the very lead-in, you can say, "In such debt and such taxes to be used," make it easy, "only for," and then you've done it, really, you've earmarked it.
It just helps kind of describe that...
I agree.
These are the...
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, have a question from...
Yeah, Ms. Fitzgerald, thanks.
Going back to Christie's point, is, is the language Tabor required that, that you've written here, could, could we start out with the half a percent figure, you know, putting that somewhere in the beginning rather than the others, or does Tabor require it to be said exactly this way? Because I think Christie's point's a good point.
Tabor requires that the question begin, "Shall city, whichever city it is, debt be increased," or "Shall city taxes be increased," and then, you know, you put the other stuff in, but the, the Constitution actually says, "All such questions shall begin as follows," I think, I don't have it right in front of me, but, you know, they, with quotation marks, so they, it's pretty darn specific, you know?
But, could, could you say, "Shall the city of Wheat Ridge increase sales, the rate of sales tax and use tax elevated by the city 1.5%?"
Put that one in the front.
Yeah, right in the front, and then say, um, "In order to raise," or, I, I don't know the following language, but you get the half a percent up in the, in the first clause of the first part of that sentence rather than the total figure.
I should have brought the Constitution to read it, but it says, "Shall," you know, you got to begin with, "Shall taxes or debt of whatever city be increased by," put in the number, the rest of it you write yourself, so you, it, it's, it's saying you don't get to color outside of those lines, that's what Douglas Bruce has told us we must start all these questions with. I would love to, "Shall taxes or debt be increased by..."
You could say, "Be increased by 0.5%."
No, I think you, I think there's actually a dollar blank that's in the, yeah, because the goal, I'm sure, was to have that, here's what your taxes are going to go up first, it was the taxpayers' bill of rights, after all, and so the, the intention of the Constitution, we have to play fair with it, was that you say what the taxes are going to increase first, then you can talk about the rate and what you're going to use it for, but, like the Constitution says, you got to give them the dollar figure right up front.
And, to be clear, if, if we weren't bonding, that may have been written a little bit differently, but because we're bonding, that, that's why we're using the word "debt."
That's correct, yeah. We're just raising taxes, you'll notice on the, on the other question, that "Shall the city of Wheat Ridge taxes be increased by up to?"
Right.
So, yeah.
George?
I, I do appreciate that question, though, because I still don't believe that I understand the answer fully, I, I actually understand exactly what you're saying, you have to say these things, but I don't, I, I'd like to evidence of the order in which they have to come, if you, if you have to say both of them, clearly, we have to say both of them, tax increase and debt, but what you're saying is debt has to come first, and it has to come in the first sentence, so as long as we have that confirmation, that, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring the Constitution in.
That's great, I mean, I know we have to say both, I'm just, you know, which one can come, which one has to come first, and when, and, you know, so, um, I'll just reiterate what a couple people have said, I do still agree with the half, with the .5% as well as the 10-year sunset, and the, the three projects that are mentioned here, I'm, I'm interested in, and had been previously in, in Anderson Park for many reasons, not the least of which is the kind of confirmation through the DIRTT task force that that was a priority, and I, and I know that it has been for many people. To what extent it can fit based on a reduction of one or more of these, I can't talk about tonight exactly, I'd have to see more details on the 3 million, as well as more details on lowering the 12, or the 7, or, or the 10 in here in order to fit it. I'll come back around to that, but I, what I'm, you know, I'm going to ask is whether or not we have time on our August 1st study session to have more review of this, clearly we need that, if we're, and this is why I asked for this slide to be up, because at the rate we're going, our ability to amend this solely in a first reading, you, you know, that may just, it, we, we still have a lot, a long ways to go, unless it seems, and so I'm just wondering, and, and I don't have kind of what's slated on August 1st in front of me, and I don't know if you do, Ken, but...
I know we, we recently, thank you, we took an agenda item off today, due to a consultant not being available to support the discussion of the NRS demographic data update, so, it looks like we, and we also took fruit to a school off, because we're, we're still waiting just a few more weeks and a couple of critical deadlines, so, it looks like we've just got two staff reports and a discussion of ordinance amending our regulations regarding trees and shrubs, so...
Trees and shrubs are important. Trees and shrubs are important, however. I mean, my, my recommendation would, would be that, that, that we can, you know, that whatever we can give in terms of direction right now, that we push that to a study session on August 1st, which then helps us get to August 8th with perhaps minimal edits on the, on what is typically a first reading that doesn't have much fanfare. So, that's, that's if, if you're, anyway, we can come back to that, but if you feel like there's room-
And Mr. Brinkin, Ms. Manory, we're both prepared to talk more specifically about those tonight. They both prepared memos that summarize what different projects might look like in those areas, but it's perhaps beyond the scope of the discussion tonight, just given the number of issues that we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I want to give fair time to that, absolutely. So, I am interested in that. One, one technical question in the last paragraph, and we've kind of talked about it, but it does say, "End when you reach 35 million." And I assume that that's not in conflict to time, but I want to make sure that that's correct, because it's just saying it ends when it hits 35 million. If we don't hit 35 million in 10 years, do you get to keep going? I guess so, because it says you end when it's 35 million. So, if that's a, if that's incorrect or confused-
No, you, you've got, you've got 10 years, and the levy, you know, the, the tax rate evaporates after 10 years.
After, right.
So, to be, trap me if you feel differently, Alan, but it's going to be, it goes for 10 years until, or until you reach 35 million, whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first, right, as long as that's clear in there.
Yeah.
You might add a couple of words after the 35 million, or something like-
Right.
"Or such lesser amount," or-
Right.
Something like that.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
I believe the 10, 10 years would rule, so.
The 10 years would rule. All right, well, that was my assumption. I want to make sure it wasn't unclear on the bottom. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's it. There is, I actually also agree with Councilmember Urban's kind of critique of the language within these three or maybe four bullet points that may come, and making sure that the language is, you know, that we're, we're wordsmithing this to be either consistent and/or making sure that we're not leaving anything on the table that needs to go into here by means of explanation or importance, so that, so that each of these bullet points is, is truly flushed out. And like Councilmember Urban, I don't have those words right with me, but I'm imagining that we can, those would be the type of discussions perhaps on August 1st that we could get into, looking at some variations, make sure that we're, we're tuning it up a little bit. So, that's it.
Other council members?
Ms. Hoppe? Thanks, Madam Mayor. So, if we're looking at kind of not wrapping this up exactly tonight and then moving it on to August 1st, I'd like to take this opportunity to let everybody know I will not be here on August 1st, and that I hope that you guys all find that Anderson Park is as important as I feel like it is. Thanks.
I think I'm most concerned about the three-year thing. So, we need to have some sort of a plan as to how, how do we advance? The fact that we're supposed to, that the, the general advice is that you use up the amount that you borrowed within that three years.
80%.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Say, what else?
I don't know, but, but if we start on Clear Creek Crossing right away, I'm sure we could move money. Don't you think we could spend 3 million, or we could spend enough on Clear Creek Crossing alone to, to meet the three-year?
Well, I, I think, we were just talking about that. I, I mean, I think we could, if, if for some reason the developer interests or doesn't move forward, that's currently engaged on the property, we could probably do that project ourselves, is that on the hook ramps? And just get that done and out of the way.
Because it's needed anyway.
Right. And on Wadsworth, the construction's expected to begin in, is it 2019? So, you know, if we're issuing the debt in 2018, you know, certainly we can get that money spent. You know, the Gold Line, we're still kind of exploring what the most strategic infrastructure investments are. You know, I think, to me, at least in my opinion, some of that work, you know, you want to make sure you kind of have the, a developer onboard, so that you're getting it built in a manner that truly supports the type of development that wants to occur up there. So, that's a little bit of a timing issue, but hopefully one that will, you know, we're, we're trying to get a better, clearer vision for that area, working with a consultant that we're under contract with right now. I just signed that contract on Friday. So, so hopefully, we can get a pretty clear vision on that. But that would probably be the biggest question mark, if, if the development isn't moving forward in that area, or we just don't have a clear enough vision. And then Anderson Park, I think, that's, doesn't look like that would be an issue to get the money spent.
In any case, it is my reasonable expectation that we, we could get that done.
When it comes to Anderson Park, is there, you know, like some of the grant monies and lottery dollars and, like, those types of things that could go towards Anderson Park that, that I know we've used for other things? Is that, like, the open space funds or, you know, all those? Is that something that could also be allocated to some of that work on Anderson Park?
It certainly can. It's, there's a limited amount of funds available, about, really about $800,000 a year. And currently, we've slotted, we have a master plan that's been adopted for Prospect Park, so we would need to change priorities. Because right now, we're trying to fund that project in phases with those funds.
Mr. Pond?
So, Ken, if you, you alluded to there, the staff may have had a little bit of ideas both on the Gold Line Station reductions and the Anderson Park, I mean, just for, in a few minutes, what, how, what's the bullet point for Anderson Park inside of here, and what's, what would come off of the Gold Line Station?
You want to speak to Anderson Park first?
I can. So, in, in general, generally speaking, at Anderson Park, for $3 million, I think we could accomplish replacement of the locker rooms at the outdoor pool, which are now 35 years old and in need of updating with family locker rooms, new showers, that kind of thing. That project could remain in place if the park, if the rest of the renovation of the park were phased, for example, if the Anderson building itself was replaced at a later date. Replacing those locker rooms for probably around a million with both hard and soft costs would be possible. And then the remainder of the money would need to be spent out in the park on site, which would include removing the baseball field and the lights, and turning that area into a multipurpose field that would also support events. And then the parking lots at Anderson are failed, need to be replaced. And then we could probably do something with the shelter in the back and, and do some reconfiguring with that. Because one of the main goals of renovation of Anderson Park is to make it more user-friendly, as well as support these events that are occurring down there. And right now, we're, we're kind of making them work down there, but it could be designed to support those, like the Carnation Festival, et cetera.
And in terms of the Gold Line, I mean, we, we developed a project list for several of the, the streets, for pedestrian bridge, for Ridge Road reconstruction from Tabor to the east toward Miller Street. So, it, it really has projects ranging from 4 million to 1.5 to 800,000, and so, I think one even less than that. So, I mean, I think there's a variety of options. And one of the things that the consultant that we've, we've hired, we're, we're trying to get to the TOD, ULI TOD marketplace event in the fall to really market the site to the development community. That's why we've engaged this consultant, to help us really identify what would be the most catalytic projects. So, I think taking this list and getting it in front of WSP to kind of say, you know, what's the most bang for the buck is an effort that is underway. So, it really, you could do anything from, you know, 4 million to pretty much 12 million.
In terms of, I'm sorry, please. I was just going to suggest a way forward when you were sort of done discussing the merits, so I'll hold off until you're, I was going to suggest that, you know, we can, we can work with bond counsel and Mr. Maus to firm up the language in the first and last paragraphs, because those are the paragraphs that the bond counsel and the lawyers and the, all the other people in the world wrangle over and, and bring those back to you. The language in the middle, I think what I'm hearing is you'd like to try to have kind of parallel language around economic redevelopment where possible. Really, they're a little different, each of them, but, and, and then bring it back to you for your August 1st study session. But I may have been out of order. I know you probably weren't done discussing the thing.
You've been making notes of all that there's been-
I've been making a lot of notes, yeah. But my job sometimes is to sort of say, "Where do we go from here?" and make suggestions, and that's my suggestion.
I think Mr. Ann has something she wanted to say.
I was going to ask, the list you have for the Gold Line, are you going to be able to go over that with the developer, the consultant, whoever you're working with, to bring to us on the first? Or can you bring the list to us? Just so, I mean, I would like to have something to go by, and how much each, each thing you're considering would cost.
We, we have a list with a, with a conceptual cost estimate. We won't be able to interface with the developer in terms of what they think is going to be most catalytic. The first thing that they're going to do, now that they're engaged, is really reach out to a series of different stakeholders and developers and start to have that conversation about what they think would be the most critical investments that would kickstart redevelopment up there. So, that'll take, you know, 30, 30 days or so, probably to firm up what the, the best projects would be.
Yeah, it's hard to make that decision without knowing what they prioritize, you know, for us there. Can you bring that list to us?
Yes.
To, to go over on the first?
We can bring our list, for sure, yeah.
Okay.
We'll bring both, probably a list from the Gold Line and a list from Anderson Park of some options, and, and then revise ballot language and, and continue this discussion.
Okay.
This will be a list more specific to the estimated cost as to what creates that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good, or do we need any more at this point? Okay, so-
Was, was there interest in, in terms of that first and last paragraph discussion, was there interest in adding some not raising property tax language that Ms. Davis had suggested?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Without raising property tax was the phraseology. We also need to increase that amount, as Alan has, has suggested.
Right.
Right?
Okay, got it.
And where the excess goes, I believe that was one of the things we-
Uh, no, I think we came to the conclusion that the, as long as we're confident we can spend at, at least that much, if not more, then we don't have to have a spillover provision.
That's good. And that is used only for these I-70s.
Yes, I included the word "only," yep.
Are we good now? All right, I believe we are. Alan, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
I believe that was the only two items we had, not that they're, they're little, they were big. And I believe we can, let me look here real quick. I think we can close this meeting. Ken, we can adjourn? Everybody's always doing this to me.